Alrighty, it is nine o'clock. We will call to the word of the business meeting in the Click Attack County Board of Commissioners. Let the record show all three commissioners are present. And for you folks on the internet, bear with us, we are having, or we are not having, the local internet providers having the juice today. So, we hope to keep Zoom alive through the meeting. With that, we will start the point of the meetings and I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Yes, we use the flag from the other side of the room.
Oh, I might want to turn my mic on. Perfect. Um.
Go ahead, start.
What?
Let it know.
Oh, um, yeah, well, if nobody heard me the whole, uh, all commissioners are present. Um. I do want to add, uh, if we get time later, which it looks like we could, to go over the board policy changes that I made at the request of the board last week. Um, so we can have that in the business agenda somewhere down there. That would be great. Which we might even get to before lunch. It looks like there might be a gap there.
Mister Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the business agenda with two add-ons. Uh, number one being a senior services advisory board applicant and number two being the draft board policies.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion of second to approve the, uh, business agenda with two add-ons. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of business agenda say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. We do not have any meeting minutes. Any issues with anything on the consent agenda?
I don't have any, do you? Uh, Mister Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda with sixteen items.
And I'll second.
Hey, we have a motion of second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Uh, this is the time where we're going to go to public comments. Public comment will be limited to three minutes. Uh, please state your name and general location for the record at the start of your testimony. Um. And with that, we do not have anybody in the room, so we will go online. If anybody online has citizen comment for us that is pertaining to something to do with Click Attack County, uh, and wants to give it, raise your hand, unmute yourself. Uh, or otherwise get our attention. Hmm? I don't see the mic moving, so she might not have it on. Anybody at all out there have citizen comment? Seven, two, one, one. Go ahead.
Greg Wagner, see. An attempt was made last week by the chairman to eliminate the oral citizens' comment and go to written comment, which would be censored by the board. This would prevent open public comment between the citizens and the board. This censorship is contrary to state law RCW forty-two thirty zero one zero, which states, "The people of this state do not yield their sovereignty to the agencies which serve them. The people in delegating authority do not give their public servants the right to decide what is good for the people to know and what is not good for them to know." Want to thank Commissioner Zoller and Commissioner Anderson for refusing to go along with this ill-conceived ideal, idea and vindictive act, which would have violated the citizens' First Amendment rights to freedom of speech and censorship. You protected the people and you are the real people's commissioner. Unlike the chairman, my comments today are germane to county topics. I did not comment on my boat, my ADU, or my nine-day cruise to the Bahamas as the chairman has done. Real leaders lead by example. When will that start here?
Thank you, Mister Wagner. Uh, does anybody else have a citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners today? Sherry, go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners. Um. Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, say also that I think eliminating public comment would not look good. I, I think, I mean, honestly, you give us three minutes, three precious minutes. We don't have any back and forth. Because once we make a comment, ask questions, you come back and say whatever, but we don't get to have a back and forth of, well, can you clarify or add any additional information? So basically, we don't even have a conversation with our corporation anyway. So, I mean, if we want to keep the illusion of government for the people, let's keep some comments going. Uh, I think the censorship, like on shutting down. I know this is not you, but there was a hotline radio sta- station that had comments and they were eliminated because I believe too many things were being said that don't want to be put out in the universe out there. So, you know, at this time of censorship, if you guys really believe that you're in here for your constituents and our health, safety, general welfare, public order and safety, whatever those international laws are. You know, like, let's keep the illusion going. You know, let's, let's be able to let the people say things, because you know, like I've said before, decisions made today through these corporations, as we found out, and thank you for your civics lessons, Mister Anderson, on how all government is corporations. Which is interesting. But, you know, let's just keep it going where we can be able to say what we want and I, oh, back to the, the future. Today, your decisions you make affect the future, affects the future of your children, their children. And if we, you know, start putting in a lot of things like higher property taxes where people lose their property, that, that doesn't let them pass it on to their heirs, you know, and so I think that if we really are a for-the-people kind of organization entity, everything's an entity now. That's kind of odd, too. I'm an entity, you're an entity. Click Attack County of is an entity. Um. Let's just keep the public comments going. And then, uh, Mister Anderson, did you ever figure out if that Click Attack County of number, Sam's number was active, because it said on Sam's it wasn't active and I just had Karen at the Sheriff's Department confirm that Click Attack County of is, uh, what runs our government. That is what's running our county government right now, so I would hope our Sam's number is active, so we can make contracts and do what you need to do as a business, so keep, keep, uh, pretending like you want to listen to us for three minutes and maybe one day you'll have a discussion with the people and that'll be interesting to see, like a town hall. But, alright, have a good day.
Thank you for your comment. Does anybody else online have a citizen comment they would like to share with the Board of Commissioners today? Being none. We'll go with the last call for citizen comment. If anybody out there on Zoom land has citizen comment, please raise your hand or unmute yourself. If not, we will continue with business of the county. Being none. Alrighty, with that, I will close citizen comment for the day and allow my seatmates to say anything they would like to say.
Sure, I just have a quick one. Greg and Sherry, thanks for calling in early morning. I always appreciate your comments and we're working on the policies. Nothing seems done yet, so we'll keep working as your county board of commissioners and serve the public. Thank you.
Miss Anderson? Mike?
If you gotta go, I'm still waiting on one response.
I don't have anything.
Okay, um, Sherry, our SAM number is good and correct and in process. We have three people that are the um, in charge of the SAM registration and I have verified that it is good. And as you, you bring up discussions with the people, I have, uh, offered both you as well as Mister Wagner to meet anytime. Um, and I'm more than happy to meet with you in person and have a conversation about all of the things that matter to you in Click Attack County. Um, I would also say, um, thank you to Mister Wagner and, uh, Sherry for your kind comments today, um, and giving, um, thanks. Um, I would say that, um, it is not necessarily censorship while you are speaking, um, about Commissioner Christopher's, um, request. Um, what he was talking about is, is what is actually legally allowable to do as well as um, what many jurisdictions throughout the state have done. Uh, Click Attack County has made it a policy in the past to always allow public comment. Um, and it used to allow back and forth, um, for many years. Um, and that, um, over the course of time, as people have, uh, become, uh...
Can you mute Sasha, please? I'm getting mic feedback.
Oh, that's when, thank you.
Go ahead.
And as people have become more, um, argumentative, I guess is the nicest way to put it, um, in their communications, the board has had to make changes as all organizations do. Um, COVID was a, a hard, difficult time for everyone and I think, um, the effects of it are still being shown in the way people communicate. And I hope that we get back to civil debate and conversation in all facets of life sooner rather than later. Um, and, uh, Mister Wagner, um, I would double-check, um, your contrary to state law. And, and you should look at the WACs along with the RCWs that what Commissioner Christopher was, um, putting forth does not actually violate your First Amendment rights based on other laws that the state have passed. And I would let him respond to that. If he so chooses.
Well, I would just argue that, um, courts have found that these meetings are considered a limited public forum. So maybe you should, uh, if you're really that concerned, look into that. Um, and just to correct you, at no point was I trying to remove public comment. Um, so again, that is an inaccurate statement. Uh, we are discussing board rules to, uh, limit the personal attacks that are currently being waged uh, by some members. Um. And we will eventually come to a solution that, uh, will get us forward. And, uh, we'll adapt those rules hopefully by the first of the year and then edit them throughout the year as needed. Um. And that's all I have to say.
Some people log in a little late.
Um, gee, I would hand it back to you on that one.
Thanks, I'm good.
Next year. Uh, with that, we'll move on to payroll benefit.
Mister Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the accounts payable warrant in the amount of three hundred forty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seventy-three cents. And the payroll benefit warrants in the amount of eight hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight hundred thirty dollars and twenty cents for the date ending December eleventh, twenty twenty-three.
I will second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion of second to pay the bills. Any discussion? Uh, I will say I did look through the bills again this week and um, well, I was gonna say I didn't find anything out of place, but I won't say that. Um, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the payroll benefit warrants? Um. In the accounts payable warrants, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, aye, motion passes.
I was just wondering for discussion, you just brought up that you found something out of place. Do we want to approve it if there's something out of place?
Um. We just did. Um, did you look at the bills today, sir?
I didn't see what you apparently saw, so I was west asking. Sorry, you went through this discussion really quick there.
I, I did find some things in there that concern me, but they have to do with budgetary practices that eventually, uh, my hope is this board will get a better handle on. Um, but currently there's no um. What's the word?
Policy.
Uh, we have no guidance, um, going forward on how to keep um. Our departments under budget. Uh, in, in where they may have to reduce their spending in December. Um, but stopping for the next budget year. Um.
So, so you meant that was a policy, it's policy, not an actual issue with something that we're paying for?
Um, correct. I don't see anything in there that was any kind of fraudulent or anything else like that.
Thank you. That I just wanted to clear. For approving stuff.
Well, I wouldn't have never approved it if there was something that was, uh, fraudulent. Um, but, um, we are way early. We do have Miss Lori in here. Do you would like to address the board since we're kind of in between?
Sure, well, I will.
She is next.
Right.
Oh, there it is. Oh, I'm, I'm doodling next to it and I thought I checked it off. I'm sorry.
There weren't times, so I think you're, uh, better just now.
Perfect. Uh, well, next up is, uh, Planning Department and Intern Planning Director Lori Anderson with a department update.
Thank you.
Yep, you're good.
Thank you.
It's been quite a busy week or so in planning and, um, first, James Dean, who I, you're all aware, he's looking to an aggregate overlay on some property um, kind of south of Housam, and he's been inquiring on his proposal and wants planning to at least, uh, get it routed, the SEPA out for comment, and then a threshold determination would be after the fact. And I know there is some concerns when I think Mochi first brought this, and I do have a map on the second page showing existing aggregate overlay on top of existing zoning and then the proposed rezone. Or it's not really a rezone, but an overlay. So just wondering if planning can proceed.
Um, thank you for this. It's with, with things being busy, um. I've lost track of it. Um, yeah, no, to me it comes down to, um, members of the public that have questioned whether this would be considered a spot zone. And going through the solar um, issues that we just got done doing where we were going to, you know, we kept getting told that if you have a specific spot, you can't just change zoning in that spot without it being a spot zone. So, to me, I, I would like to, um, send the, uh, send a quick legal interpretation or legal opinion over to the prosecutor, just because I don't want to waste staff's time and the planning, uh, commission's time if it ends up being a problem down the road. So if we can get a quick and legal interpretation on whether or not this is okay going forward, then if it is great, let's get the thing going forward and get it off our plate. Uh, if it isn't, at least we save staff and the planning commission time. Um. So that would be my, um, recommendation for the board is to send it over for uh, legal counsel to work with Lori and get the information they need to make a determination to make sure we're not getting ourselves in a lawsuit.
If I, if I may, Chair.
Sure.
I thought when we discussed this last time, I thought when we discussed this last time, the chair was going to send over a PA opinion request on this, because when the spot zone came up, it was, it can't be considered a spot zone if it's already attached to the same zoning. Spot zoning is when you, when you create a zone that's in the middle of another zone that is completely different than anything else. Um. That's spot zoning, but you, this is an overlay and it's a, and it would be attached to something that's already overlaid, so from all of my time on the planning commission and my years, this is absolutely not a spot zone, but I always want to make sure that the chair has, um, all the time and effort um, to ask for PA opinion requests, but I thought that when we went through this, that's what you were doing a while ago.
And that was, uh, my recollection too, and looking back on the records, um, I thought this is being processed and I do have concerns um, for holding up permits and holding up the work of the staff. Um. I thought this was already out for that question. Um. And I, I have to agree, I've been on, I was on planning commission ten years. Um, and also worked with the planning department through Kurt Dyer and other issues and I, I agree with, uh, Mister Anderson's interpretation of spot zone. Uh, we've seen it before and that's exactly what I was, uh, educated on before.
So I guess for me, uh, go ahead.
Can I speak before somebody speaks twice? Can't wait to have rules. Um. I, I am fine if you guys want to proceed without a legal opinion. Um, that, that is your choice. Um, I do not do things as a commissioner of one, I do things as a board of three. So, no, I did not send in a legal opinion because you had not seen and read and approved the legal opinion I was asking for. Um. So, that's what you have before you. And if you would like to have that forwarded over to uh, our attorney to look at, that's fine. If you already, um, have made determinations that it's not spot zoning and you feel that would hold up or delay the applicant's uh, permit and you want to move forward, then the board can move forward too. It's, it's a board of three. Um, I just need to know what direction you want to go.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Uh, I guess I have two questions, uh, one for staff. Um, this would be under a conditional use permit, um, after the, the zoning determination. Um, and then it would be, uh, overlay. Um, and the board had decided that, um, you know, we've got the things that you as the the inter and planning director are willing to do. Is this something that you feel comfortable with processing?
At this point, sending the SEPA out for comment would be something we could definitely do. And again, we wouldn't be issuing a determination, we'd be sending it out to get comments to then make a SEPA determination. And I would hope, you know, given, given the time of the year, the holidays and stuff, it would be at least the beginning of the year before we would, comments would be due. So a decision on the SEPA determination, I would hope and pray we either have new director or some consultants to help us with the steps forward from that.
And, and did you say this has been sitting kind of in purgatory since June?
Uh, yes.
Okay, that's.
That's when Mochi left, correct?
Well, Mo- Mochi was here, we got the application, we were working on quite a few things, then Mochi was on vacation to see her family. It's gone, um, three weeks, give or take a few days, and then she came back and soon thereafter things got more complicated and then she did leave us. So, this has kind of been high on the priority list, but on the unfortunate back burner.
So would it delay the project? Would the board be delaying the project? If the board gave you, uh, yes to go out to SEPA comments while it was getting illegal there? Would that be delaying at all?
That wouldn't delay necessarily. It would be kind of awkward having it out for comment while we still have
Okay.
the prosecutor looking at it for and that's just my, my thought off the top of my head. And certainly life is awkward at times and so are permitting things, so whatever direction you give me. And I think Lori has a...
I do, I have a comment. Um. I have to commend the planning department and Mochi for all the work that she was doing before she left. Uh, and we've done, I think, pretty darn good not to let things slip through the cracks. And this is one of the only ones that I've heard that has kind of backed up a little bit and we need to possibly get back on track with normal everyday work. Um, Jake, you might want to correct me if I'm wrong, but I think there's a little misconception here versus it will go to planning commission versus going to CUP. Um, if this moves through the SEPA process and goes to CUP.
It, it's not a conditional use in any way. What would happen if the overlay zone, aggregate overlay zone is placed on that property? Uh, Mister Dean.
Okay, I understand why it's going that way back.
Right, okay.
So if, if he wanted to do it now, it would be through, he would have to do it over a CUP over that area. But what he's asking for is an overlay permit, which then he won't have to go through the CUP.
Correct. He would not go through a CUP to do the mining operations on that new parcel adjacent to the existing overlay. But he would have to go through DNR, Hart Natural Resources for their mining permits.
Sorry, I should have been more clear, but.
No, that's okay. That, it's just a little different.
It was kind of an either or. I mean, he could have went through a full CUP, but doing the rezone then allows you to go through the different process or the over, right, overlay zone. Um. Oh, and my last question, and you do not have to answer this, but you've been working for the department for thirty years. Do you think that this is, would this be from everything you've seen in thirty years? Would you, is, would this be considered a spot zone?
I do not believe it. It is a spot zone.
Okay.
Especially we allowed the rezone with, or the aggregate overlay to be applied. I think it was ninety-seven or ninety-eight when that happened. And that includes, I believe it's like five lots. And then this would be an expansion of that, so. And at that point, when they first did the aggregate overlay, it was not considered a spot zone then.
Because it had been a, it had been a, uh, gravel pit for a long time before that, but that's when James Dean bought it and then went through the process.
Correct. He owns, and then the county actually has a little parcel there and there's another Jim Fritchy, I believe, has part of the, I'm, part of the ownership of the existing, or...
Well, it, to me, it sounds like the board does not have concerns about it being a spot zone, so in that regard, there would be no reason to um, get a legal opinion request, but I'm still waiting for board consensus, no opinion request, and tell staff to move forward or opinion request before staff moves forward. Um, there, there's still the answer on the table that I haven't heard.
So, um, to be clear, I, I don't think it's a spot zone, but also to be clear, uh, the policy of this board is, is that any board member can um, put in a PA opinion request, and that's, that was the policy that we've discussed and went back and forth on and over and over, as well as the chair always has the ability, um, to put in a PA opinion request. Um, so I guess I would say I have no problem moving forward, um, with the SEPA comments, um, while allowing the chair to, um, send in a PA opinion request. Um, I would just note on this, um, it says the question that has been asked by some members of the public is spot zoning. And I think you would want to put, is this considered spot zoning or something in there so that it's a little clearer for the PA?
What would you like this opinion request to come from, the board or from the chair?
It's fine coming from the board. Doesn't matter to me one bit. I mean, I just want to make sure that you feel you have access to counsel at all times.
And I, I'd like to move forward with the project and move the process start, and I see that still leaves time that if the chair would like to submit that question, uh, I have no problem with that question being submitted, but I do think we should move forward for the department and for... For the department and for the applicant.
I guess where I'm at is I. I'm in no way trying to hold up a project or an applicant. I. Uh, take offense to the implementations. That I am trying to hold up a project or an applicant. Um, and I would uh, hope that staff moves forward with what staff needs to do. Um, to get the project. At least moving. Um, but with that, I will. Submit the legal request just so I can answer the public's questions when they ask it. Uh, in an educated fashion.
I mean, uh, for the record, are you, are you stating that either Commissioners Zoller or I are. Saying that you're trying to hold the project up because I don't believe either of us were doing that at all.
I believe that is what you implied with your comments, sir.
And I, I did not hear that, and so I'm going to disagree with you. Um, we're a board of three and we are allowed to. Have civil conversations and I really don't appreciate inferences of uh, speculation. And the way that. We're doing business. It's a deterrent to this board.
Okay, so I think you have your direction to move forward. On that issue.
Okay, will do, um, moving on under canvas, the prosecutor's office is still taking the lead. Especially with the decisions from the Court of Appeal and the hearings examiner. And once again, once the conditional use is resolved, um, they will be submitting a draft finding site plan that'll come to the board. And. And have your review. Um, moving on to planning commission, and I know you're aware of it, three members, their terms expire at the end of the year. And we do have upcoming workshops, December eighteenth, January sixteenth and February twentieth. Um, Bluebird Solar, we have no update, uh, requests for proposals. Um, Public Works is going to be coordinating more planning this week and um. Hopefully we can get something together and to the board or whoever for comments. In the near future, and then just kind of an F Y I, the cattlemen, um, Dan Lee, their chairman called yesterday. And I talked to him for a little bit and we talked about the tips, tips for country living. And uh, I directed them to the website where it is, and I said I try to track down some actual booklets to get to him. And what they're hoping, this year they noticed quite an increase of confusion with their cattle drives, cattle moving down the mountains and. Newer residents, oh my, I have cows in my front yard eating my garden and so on and so forth. So, um, they're hoping to get more information out to people, I suggest maybe reaching out to the realtors who are selling some of these. Um, larger acreages and people naively coming, building a nice house, planning a beautiful garden. And then the cows come and eat it, so, um.
If I can interrupt you there, where, where are we on that?
Um, we were condensing it and with the loaded work that we have through December, trying to get finalized on things, that is on the list. But it's not a really high priority compared to other issues, but I've been working with Leanne. Uh, what we're trying to do is condense it a little, take some of the larger photographs out so that uh, it doesn't cost a fortune to print it.
No, and that makes sense, and I told Mister Lee that when we. Get an updated version or something, we'd, one way or another, get him some copies and they could distribute them. And suggested, like I said, reaching out to some of the realtors, so when people naively come. From the city or something, I want to buy eighty acres and have no idea that it's open range and. They need to build fences, so.
And side note, can you get me uh, Mister Spollings' telephone number?
Oh, okay. Yes. And. Uh, oh, sorry. Beyond that, um, as you know, we've been pretty short-staffed in the planning department and yesterday our phones, emails and in-person inquiries are kind of crazy. And we have a lot of large projects in the work and it's hard to keep up with everything, so. We're hoping to have some, either a new director or some guidance, a consultant or somebody to help us in the near future to lighten our load. But we're all still pretty positive and looking forward to co-hosting the, the holiday gathering on Thursday.
Well, you guys are doing a great job and thank you for. Filling in and above and beyond filling, and we're working hard to get you somebody right away.
Oh, good. And certainly if you have questions, just ask, otherwise I'll let you be and move on to other things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Speaking of which, have we figured out the protein for the West End party?
Um, I have a turkey that's waiting, um, because I knew that was mine, so I'm doing. Uh, twenty pound and a fifteen pound here, and then I've got a sixteen pound for the West.
And I'm doing ham for both.
And have you decided what you're doing, Commissioner Christopher?
Um, not exactly. Next item is at ten o'clock unless uh, you have something before that.
Um, one thing that I was asked to bring up, um, if I may, uh, through board pending, but since we have time, and this is before the board. Um, the uh, By State Bridge Authority. Appointments were for one year as what we did to get this thing started and rolling. Um, part of the legislation and the interim bylaws um, require us um, that we need to. Appoint people for uh, staggered terms or whatever we want to do um, for four years. So some people would go on for two, some people would go on for four. And the question before the board was, since we only did one year, do we want to um, open that back up completely? Um, for new applicants, or do we just want to move those people into two and four-year terms? And how do you feel?
I'm fine with moving a minute to and for your terms, how about you?
And I, I will say that um, I have been absolutely tremendously impressed by the people that we have appointed. And are alternates to that board, um, everyone is showing up, um, everyone is on committees and they are doing a fantastic job. Um, and so I guess the question would be is how do we want to pick who's on two and who's on four? And do, do you want me to talk to them and, and work it out amongst the, the board members and alternates or, and bring something forward or? What, what would you guys like to do?
Probably a proposal for you people who are on the ground, discuss it amongst yourselves and bring it back to us for approval. Be your fastest success rate probably.
I have no issues with how we do it.
Okay, and then um, the only other thing is currently we do it differently from Oregon, it was the only difference in how we set it up. Um, how we set it up was, um, there's the three, three people that are voting members. And granted, we treat everybody pretty much like they're voting, we let everybody speak, it's an amazing group to be on. Uh, but then the other three are in a priority order, so. Um, one person is like the first alternate, so if any three are missing, then that person sits in, then the next person sits in. And so then it, it helps the person at the bottom know how much meetings they can probably miss, you know, in attendance wise. In Oregon, you have like the county commissioner over there has one person behind him. And so when we put it forward, this, what we're doing has the best ability or best chances of getting a quorum. Where Oregon doesn't have that, and so I just wanted to see between the board, um, do we want to keep going the way we're going? Or do we want to try to do what Oregon's doing or let? Let us continue doing whatever we want.
Sounds like the Washington side's. Got it covered. Which is the important thing.
We've always had forums.
I would leave it up to that board to make a recommendation of this board on how they want to operate.
Works for me.
Uh, I guess while we're on it, I guess I can give a little bit of an update um, on where the bridge is, since everybody else is always asking about it. We have the uh. R F P on the street um, for the um, design build contractor, because this is a progressive design build. Um, you know, that process in itself usually takes two to three months, um, just to bring someone on board, and actually it's going to be more like five months from start to finish. Uh, we're currently in the cone of silence, so nobody can talk to any of the proposals. And um, I think at the end of this week, they have um, the last chance to ask questions back to the, the board. Um, or to um, the H N T B or the owner's rep. And then um, we should have it figured, well. The applications need to be in in January and then by March we'll have somebody on board to start design. Um, we have. About a hundred and fifteen million dollars raised so far, um, we also with the bridge toll increase will have access when we apply for Tiffia dollars. Um, seventy-five to a hundred and twenty-five million dollars more, so we're really sitting over two hundred. Um, and we've got applications into the federal government for two hundred total that. We're hoping to hear back this week or at least by the end of the year on the mega infra and rural programs. Um, if those, if that comes through. The bridge is getting built. Like, there's nothing that would stop the bridge getting built at that point. Um, the issue that we have moving forward, like all big massive projects like this is cash flow. Um, because we have seventy-five million from Washington, but it's staged out in future years that we're trying to push forward. And Oregon's money that we got, you know, through the legislature that we thought we were going to have access to immediately is. Lottery bonds that they're not going to do the bonding until twenty twenty-five, and so we've got this. Potential cash crunch about June of this next year, and so we're looking at all options available. Um, I will, if the federal government um, passes their um, budget. Uh, rather than continuing our resolution for twenty twenty-four, we've got um, another eight million dollars from direct appropriations from our senators. That's really great, that, I don't know how long that'll take, but we end up, we may end up having to go out. Um, either to the Oregon Investment Bank, which is, you know, underneath Oregon D O T, and then you're paying interest in all this. Um, or we could go out to the private sector, um, you know, institutional investors and pay interest. Um, so that we can bridge that gap, we know we've got money coming and everybody'd give us the money because you know you can get it reimbursed. Um, and so the one question that um. We had, that was brought up that I said I would bring up, and that's why I'm giving all this background is. Uh, Hood River County has their um, big timber, um, timber program where they have cash in there that just sits there most of the time. And so if we have to, if we have, need like a bridge loan for a short amount of time, the question was is can Hood River, Clickatack County with the cash reserves. Potentially do a short-term bridge loan so that we don't have to go to the Oregon Investment Bank, because if you go to the Oregon Investment Bank. They charge you one percent off on top and then they charge you interest on top of that. And so, of course, you know, we're getting money in the short-term market um, on our money, but could we, you know, do a short-term loan over here and get the same interest? Without having to pay that one percent, because one percent of a loan adds up to a lot of money real fast. And so, I mean, it's a potentially a discussion for the finance committee, but in the end, it's still our type of a decision, but that's something I don't think we've ever really done is do. Loans to other intergovernmental agencies, um, you know, this is of course the number one economic development project in the region and I would hate. Because when I do, when we do the math. If we, you know, because of a cash crisis and we lose a year, that adds about twenty million dollars to the project just in the interest alone. And so anything we can do to keep that moving forward and have options. I mean, hopefully the money comes through, but we're planning for worst-case scenario if the cash doesn't come through on the right day.
Well, thank you for working on that, Jake, it's. Beyond my scope, uh, for all the juggling that has to go on with all the different departments and the money, it's, it's quite a project. Uh, and on the simple level, I'm looking forward to just seeing what the design is. I want to see what it looks like. I appreciate the team working on it, that's for sure. Long time coming.
And I can tell you a little bit about the aesthetics committee that we're standing up as part of the N I P A process, but if, I don't know where. I want to give you guys time to mull that over if it's something you'd be interested in or not, but I said I'd bring it to the board.
Yeah, whatever you need to keep going forward, uh, I'd be willing to listen to anything, and I, and I know you're going to. Reach out for all the right advice. On how that works and how it works legally. Hopefully the federal government will fund what they need to fund and we can keep doing the work we do without scrambling.
Right, but even if the federal, the big, the two hundred million, it takes twelve to eighteen months just to set up your grant agreements. I mean, it's, the red tape is ridiculous, and so that's, we're talking the gap funding.
I would have concerns. Of the county backing that, but. Those concerns could be alleviated. Through the finance committee. So, yeah, I wouldn't say I'm a no, but I would say I'm a concerned. With the idea. Just because. Where my knowledge base is on it. So, not opposed.
Where your what?
Where my knowledge base is on it. So not opposed, but um. I would say I need more critical thinkers in the room analyzing it.
So I guess moving forward then, uh, being that you're on the finance committee and I think you guys have another meeting before the end of the year, is this something you would be able to bring up?
I could. But since you're on the bridge committee, I would certainly think. Uh, it would be better for you to either bring it up to the auditor or the treasurer or. Uh, maybe we post that finance meeting. As an open public meeting so that you can give a presentation to the full board with a full. Diagnostic. So that I don't do it a disservice.
So I guess, um, I guess moving forward then, probably the easiest thing would be to talk to the treasurer and see if it's even a possibility and something he'd entertain. And then if he would, then we could bring it up to the finance committee and then bring in, I know, um. Uh, H N T V, um, the port would be happy to come up and give us a fuller, more full, complete update of where the bridge is at and where. Where we're going in the critical pathways. Maybe in January or February. I tried to burn up as much time as I could.
We have a couple minutes left? Um, I think, uh, I don't know if Elise has done it yet, I forwarded some information through Elise on the airport. And um, there was actually, uh. A few of the airports in Washington State are gathering together for a lawsuit against Washington State. For legislation that was written that is allowing them to siphon off. Airport tax money that should be going back to the airports and putting it in the general fund. And they have attorneys in Shalan County's leading the uh, the charge. Uh, and so our airport manager sent that information out to both counties. Uh, the county and the city of the Dows, the city of the Dows referred it back to us because it is Washington legislation, it's. Has nothing to do with Oregon, so the decision remains with us if we want to join, enjoy in that um, suit. To try to get those dollars diverted back to the airports where they belong, and it is. Uh, from what I understand, it is federal law that those do belong to the airports. But there was a preempted piece of legislation that was allowing it to be diverted to the state general fund. The buy-in for the suit is a thousand dollars. Uh, it would cost the county nothing except for our support because the airport has looked and they do have that within their budget.
The thousand dollars?
Yes. So if you'd like time to look at all those documents and then get back to me, um.
I'm a little aware of it and I, I know you just came through, so Commissioner Christopher probably hasn't had time to read it all, um. I would, I would say, you know, I, I have no problem um, joining this, but I think we would need to send it over to the P A. And, and then also because we're joint owners of the airport, I would hope that the P A would talk with, um.
Yes.
Jonathan Kara or the city of the Dows, and if both of them are on board, um, I have no problem moving forward, I think. Um, I've always wondered about that too, but I also know there's a lot of state dollars go into airports that. Um, it's one of those things that I, there's, there's the potential, they're like, here, we'll give you this, but we're going to take the money away over here because we need it for roads, so.
Yeah, I don't know how they're circulating it around. Yeah, I don't know how they're circulating it around on their end, but I'm glad somebody's looking into it.
Yeah, I guess where I'm at is, since we are partners with the city of the DOWs, I would like to make sure. We have their support, and if that's just a written letter of support from them. Uh, that's fine, and then also, uh, I guess I'd say a legal analysis.
And it has, it's all been sent.
We're not barking up the wrong tree.
It's all been sent over to the prosecutor. I just wanted to get your approval on it, and when we hear back from him, um, I'll also reach out to the city to make sure.
Yeah, the same deal. I, I wanna make sure the city's on board. I'm, I can't imagine they're not, but I also don't wanna offend when they're joint orders.
Great, so I'll update you when I hear.
You got anything, Commissioner Christopher, while you're meetings? I could say that the local OTN meeting, which I believe Commissioner Christopher went to for a couple of years, and then I don't think. Either, nobody's appointed to it, but it's a really good meeting, um, and it hits a lot of different things. About substance use and disorder and everything, um, they have meetings every month. Um, and um, if Commissioners or, and it's really great, um, group of people, if Commissioners or wanna call into one of those, cause I, we're not on a board. Um, something that's always really good, and I don't know if it's on your agenda. OTN.
Yeah, and what does that mean? Do you know?
I've only got three million different, three different acronyms in my head.
I, I would agree with that. It, it's not a board that's appointed to any of us, nor is it a board that. Needs us, uh, as a member to continue, but it also is, I would imagine, helpful for them. For all the Commissioners to at least be aware of it, so. Um, I do think it's good that all of us occasionally. Join into that one so that we all have a better understanding of the, the issues and the services that are currently taking place.
I can't, I looked through my emails, like, it doesn't say what OTN stands for.
Okay, that's okay, Al.
We can make something up.
Go ahead.
Opiate Treatment Network.
That sounds good. Formerly known as.
Uh, but they, oh, it, the, I will say, the OTN um, meeting, the big question was, what are we doing with our opioid dollars? And have we set them, and so, um, that's the question of what direction, um, there is an email that sent out, I guess, since. This summer, there's, there's a new like list of all the things that you can do with it, which is pretty much anything. Um, and but, yeah, I think we have three, three checks so far on it. Um, I can get, it amounts to like sixty-five or so thousand, don't quote me on that, I can find it, Jensen.
Yeah, you're, you're about right on that.
Um, but.
So where we are with that currently is, there's questions on how much it's going to be recurring yearly. I think as we get into next year and get the next payment, we'll have a better understanding of that. And then the topic for this board, I, I'm sure there's no shortage of agencies with their hands up. Uh, looking for that money, but it, it's going to end up being a discussion for this board on whether it. Uses that for staff that the county has. Uh, to do something in that description. Uh, or whether it wants to uh, farm out the money to an outside agency to do something in that description. Uh, it's just once we farm it out, you're never getting it back. Um, is that agency, whoever you chose to give it to, is gonna be very hard-pressed to wanna give it back to you if you decide to do your own something. So hopefully, when we get to that policy decision. We have a better understanding of what agencies or what resources are out there. Uh, hopefully, with like the meeting we had last week about the homeless, I don't know that half the agencies knew the other half the agencies existed. There was not a lot of communication amongst them, and so I wanna make sure that we're not. Giving it someplace to do something that somebody else is already doing. Uh, if we do choose to outsource that, that money, but we should no more come first to the year when we get a, the next year's.
I can, I can add two things, uh, just cause I don't wanna be, you know, say the wrong thing. I'm at about fifty-three point four thousand dollars so far in it. From what we've seen for the payment so far, and the other update at the OTN meeting was there may be one more settlement coming through at some.
There is another settlement. Or paperwork's not final, but, you know. So that's kind of the kicker, is we're just banking it now. To number one, make sure we know what that funding level's gonna be. Uh, number two, then we can see what other counties are using theirs for. And, and then we could, this board would be able to make better educated decisions next year on whether it wants to. Step up some kind of a program, use that for a half-time employee in. Uh, mental health, in adult probation, in the jail, in whatever it wants to do. Uh, but I would hope when we do have that discussion, we have at least our staff here. Um, that are knowledgeable on that problem, the opiate problem, because I, from what I'm hearing. The transition is the hard part. Uh, they, they get treatment in the jail, they get treatment in probation, once they get off probation, they. When they're supposed to go out to one of those other multitude of agencies that are out there. Uh, there's nobody really following up and they get lost in the transition, because it's not our county's job description to follow up. So I think, I think when it comes that time, you will hear from entities that work for the county. That they would like to maintain that in the county, so they can be the follow-up people, uh, to keep those people. In treatment, uh, so that they're not lost once they leave the county and, and have to go out to the outside sources. But anyway, that's topic for another day. With that, we will move on to the Public Works update, and I forgot to ask you last week, but at some point, could you give us an update? I asked Mr. Jeff to, uh, potentially find us a contingency backup plan for if the Republic. Uh, Union does end up striking next week, that we at least have a section of gravel somewhere that we might uh, accumulate. Our own um, stockpile of trash.
Uh, we actually, yeah, I can, I can do that now, or we could wait till the end, however.
However you wanna do it, I just wanna make sure we, we are.
Numerous contingency plans, depending upon at what level Republic will work with us. And we'll just might as well do it now, so we're here. Um, one level, the best level for us would be that, uh, they strike. Or not strike would be the best, but let's say they do, and they still make their stuff available for us. Um, then I'll work with Rob, we have to see if, uh, essentially if they would consider our people scabs, that our people have jobs, so they would. Remember, we have Repet Republic people that work for us, so we could essentially use their vehicles. And basically haul our own stuff to the landfill, if they would go for that. Now, if the landfill is completely closed down to beginning on what level, and we can't use their vehicles, cause they're not gonna allow us to do the other option. We have another option is, is we haul the stuff to um, to Yakima. Use our trucks, that will, that will be more expensive, because everybody, that will mean everybody bags everything. And then we just pick it up, put it in our trucks and haul it to Yakima. We'd work with, uh, Toppenish over where they have a small landfill to dump that in the immediate future. That would be by far the best thing, anything else? If we stockpile it anyplace else, we, you know, we have to worry about, you know, animals getting in it. Not that we really have a lot of that type of garbage, but it doesn't matter. We start to worry about environmental waste. Um, so the best thing to do would be to haul it out, so we do have options if we have to go there. But I will forewarn you, the option of, we can't use their stuff, we have to use our stuff, which means now everybody's bagging everything. So we're buying a lot more garbage bags, cause we have no way to get it out from the dumpsters into our trucks. Except for putting somebody in the dumpster, and I'm not, I can't do that. Um, so there's really no way to do that, so essentially what it would mean is people would put it alongside the dumpster. And we would take two guys off the road department, and they would go. There once a day and haul, toss all the stuff in a dump truck and haul it to Toppenish.
But I, I just wanna make sure that, I, I mean, my hope is that there is not a strike, but I also don't want. A problem occurring where there is, and we haven't even tried to think about contingency plans yet. I see a hand in the back, you'd have to come forward to a microphone if you're going to.
Well, I think we'd have to be sensitive too, is ads may not, may not let the guys cross the picket line.
Right, that's why I was saying, we might not be able to use Plan A, so we'd be using Toppenish, which means all of our stuff. So, Plan A would be the, would be the easiest and the less cost to the count. But again, like Rob said, we'd have to work with the union. Right, to see if they would allow.
If I may, is this, is this strike just at the landfill, or is it also at the transfer stations? Is it also they're driving around in the county? I mean, where is it? Because we also authorize them to take, take them to take it to another landfill, so if this landfill's closed, we still authorized another landfill.
I believe this is for all Union employees from Republic inside Clickatack.
Is, is that what's out at the landfill though? Transfer station.
I don't know for sure whether it's the C D L drivers that pick up everybody else's trash, I don't know that.
I think they can do mul, they can work in multiple places, so I don't know how it works, but I think you could, cause we've hired a couple of their guys. And you know, they may, they may work picking up garbage, they also may work at landfill, I think they could rotate around.
Just to backtrack a little bit for me, um, have you been speaking with people at the site or? A variety of information, where is the whole discussion coming from? Just, uh, Mr. Christopher, your conversations, or has there been other conversations that you've had?
We have not reached out to anybody at the landfill. I was just requested by the chair to look into it just in case.
Yeah, and I have not had discussions with the landfill on what they're per, you know, Republic on what they're perceived and thought is or anything else. I, I just wanna make sure that we have at least thought about it on the what-ifs. To make sure that we have some kind of a backup plan or a Plan A, Plan B, Plan C, just in case. Um, because, uh, word from the workers is next week they're going to decide on the future. So it would be nice if we had a backup plan, just in case their decision, uh, meant they weren't hauling our trash.
So I, I guess the, the question would be is, is the backup plan and health, safety and welfare, if they strike at the transfer stations is two. Are we going to wanna try to come up with a backup plan for that?
Are you saying that if they strike at the transfer stations, you wanna create a backup plan where everybody in the county can dump garbage at some vacant field somewhere?
Um, I'm just saying that, um, you know, if nobody can take their trash anywhere, that's gonna either get dumped somewhere. And there's a long history of people throwing trash off ravines here in this county, and, um. We at least need to be having this conversation, and hopefully having this conversation, what Republic's plan is gonna be, is they're the ones that run the transfer station. And, and if I would hope, and, and I have, for all intents and purposes and open transparency, I have a, a, a meeting with Steve Gilmer Wednesday. So I don't have the answers, and I know have both of you had a chance to meet with him and talk with him about these things.
Um, other than his assurances that they have a backup plan to keep things moving, and they will bring their employees in from out of state. If needed to keep things working, that's all I know, and I am not going to. Uh, pry or get in the middle of a, a union. Uh, negotiation of, um, entities that I do not control, so I, I'm not going to. Uh, prior get into it more than that, nor do I want to offend the Union workers that may strike. Um, that's, that's their choice, I just wanna make sure, just like at my house. I'm going to make sure that I dump my trash before that happens, and so that I can accumulate at my house. If they do happen to be on strike for a while, I wanna make sure we as a county government are not stockpiling our trash in the streets somewhere. Waiting for an answer back. I also don't know how you would even start to facilitate. An idea where the county is now responsible for picking up individuals' garbage. Don't even know how you'd facilitate that in any way, shape or form.
Well, I just wanna make sure that, I mean, as long as you're saying you had a conversation and they have a backup plan, I just wanted to make sure there's a backup plan. Because we've seen how angry people were in Skagit County, then, you know, they couldn't take their trash to the transfer station, and it doesn't just. Fall on the company, it also falls on the county commissioners, and so. Having the conversation and being on record saying, you know, we see this coming and we wanna make sure there's a plan, I will definitely, um. Reiterate that with my conversation with Mr. Gilmore is, is that I hope to, hope, hope very much you guys have a plan in place.
The, the hard part for us is twofold, so, uh, you look at those counties and. They were building up trash in containers full of trash at their. Their hub, their inter-mortal, you might say, we don't have an inter-mortal, nor do we have a whole bunch of tech containers to. Uh, build up and stockpile. So I, I would say that we have even less, uh, facility in this county. To deal with what those counties had to deal with. Uh, we just do not have the resources available. Um, or the area or the land to do such a thing. So I would certainly hope their backup plan is. Amenable, but I don't know what that backup plan is, nor do I know that they will disclose it to you, whether in the middle of Union negotiations. Trying to think ahead of things.
That's what we're always trying to do.
We have a backup plan for our stuff, that's.
That's the main focus I was trying to get.
Yep, so we did that, we did consider the other people, and that would be a humongous undertaking.
That I don't see any way, shape or form without us going out and immediately buying. Sixty garbage trucks and sixty C D L dryers, and. That's if you were willing to store it on some rancher's property just in bags for now, cause we don't have an inter-mortal that would even. Be able to facilitate any of that, that while. That might be a nice backup plan, that is an absolute pipe dream of a backup plan that could never happen.
Exactly.
It, it's much easier if you have, you know, in those other counties where you have Republic hauling the waste, but you have a different company. That's actually picking it up curbside, because they're not on strike, they can still pick it up curbside and dump it at an inter-mortal or a piece of land or whatever else. The garbage trucks aren't on strike, here the garbage trucks could be on strike. So it, totally different scenario. So, yeah, no, I wasn't broaching into that, I was just broaching what to do with the counties.
But I figured, yes.
So anyway, I think we have answers, and thank you for looking into that, and, and hopefully you keep your finger on that pulse next week, and. We all hope for the best.
Yep, and we're hoping for the best. Yeah, we have a little bit of inside information if we need it, but, uh, we haven't heard anything, and we're not reaching out, cause we would like you, we don't wanna be part of that. So, uh, we've gone through the consent agenda was already approved. Uh, we have no pay estimates. That brings us into construction and design. So.
So construction, the curb warning signs and guidepost projects started. This week, I believe, and what continues, the weather allows. The twenty twenty-three crushing contracts and bonds were on the consent agenda this morning. They're hoping to get in in January. Big Golden Area paving, the contracts and bonds were forwarded to the contractor for signature. On design, the Sundale Old Highway eight, we did pick up that last parcel we needed for right of way. So plan specs and advertisement documents are being assembled and finalized. Our data collection ball banking project consultant started work last week and have already completed a quarter of the infield work. Bridge repair bundles, we're still working forward with Wash Dot to get our R F P documents in place so we can get a firm set to design those projects. And twenty twenty-four annual striping, we're working on the contract so that we can get that out to add as well. That's about it for an update.
Okay. Uh, on the maintenance side, we're repairing a rock slide on Hanging Rock Road on the east central here. We're doing some ditching and some moaning. West end, we're fixing some roads from flooding in the Glenwood area. Latticus took about five loads of rock to put it back into commission, but it is in commission. Uh, we're brushing along the Trout Lake High, we will be brushing along Trout Lake Highway in the Snowden area. There he is. Um, upcoming facilities, not a lot of change here. Uh, insulation project should be complete this week. They just got to put in some, um. Some vents, they'll be ready to go. Still working forward with the courthouse remodel, courtroom remodel. Uh, picnic table will be installed in Wishram tomorrow and that'll finish that. Uh, Christmas, uh, bizarre went well in Dallasport from what we heard. Um, we're starting, uh, the, uh, it's under construction for the water bottle filler here in the courthouse. Uh, winter riding. Uh, that's the same thing. Fuel islands, the same thing. Otter's office, we've started the demo in there. As we said before, Frank's been moved, he's finding there's new digs. Uh, just a few punch list items and their sadist pass stuff is done. Hoping to finish that this year if they can get the stinking antennas in. Okay, some follow-up stuff. Vending machines, we got, we, somebody reached, a vending machine provider reached out to us.
Well.
Um, because we kind of put out the word we were looking for. Um, what they're proposing is a ten percent commission paid quarterly. That's what we would get. We would, you know, they provide, we provide the electricity, they would provide the machines. Kind of, they would want a contract minimum of two years because they'd go out and purchase whatever machines we wanted. They can do hot beverages, cold beverages, uh, frozen beverages. All different, anything you want, they can pretty much.
And it's not necessarily a cost to us. We would get a ten percent commission so that to pay for the power.
Yes, we get, they, there's, that's exactly, and so it's a break even.
Right.
The question is if one, does the board want these still? And if so, where do they want them? The only cost would be is if we do not have power there. That would be running them in too. And at this point, would we be lo- looking to upgrade the ones in the courthouse also? Um, because you know, one of them has an out of order sign on it.
Always.
Always. The other one, I was over there yesterday looking at the water bottle filler and that thing has like three items in it. Uh, not that I use it, but it's pretty, pretty sparse. Um. So I guess we're looking for direction if you, if we want it. And if so, where do we want them and how many? There's a lot of, a lot of choices here.
Um.
And I don't necessarily need a decision today.
Right. I, I guess for me. The only thing I was looking for was, uh, essentially cold beverage. And snacks, not necessarily coffee and chicken soup and all that other stuff. Cause I don't want to add a third machine. Um. I would, uh, I would like to. Well, I would hate to have the current person in the courthouse lose their contract. Um, it's, it's pretty apparent that what's over there is usually broken or empty. Um, so I would be open to doing that one as well. The one over here, I would like to see it on the bottom floor. Uh, because that is the floor that mostly gets used. And when we have community meetings and whatnot and everybody's wandering around looking for a soda or a bottle of water, I don't want to have to send them to the third floor. Uh, where they have no supervision. So for me, I would personally like it as close to that rotunda as possible. Um, without being the biggest eyesore and I don't know where that would need to be, but.
We looked at a potential, if you were, if the board had suggested the bottom floor. Of maybe tuck it away in the corner in the Mount Adams room. Cause that is open to.
What about out by the, uh, mailboxes there in that little owl cove next to the mailboxes?
We'll have to check that. We'll have to check and see.
Cause that's kind of tough.
Yeah.
Frosted glass, you don't have to look at the back of the dang thing or something.
We could, we'll look at that, see if that's a possibility. I mean, we looked up here, we're kind of limited. I mean, there's some outlets right there, but then you reduce the width of this area and you know.
I was gonna say, the design of the building was not designed for it or you would have had an alcove?
Right, exact.
Um, but to me, I mean, even I think there's an alcove on both sides of that front door. So even if one was on one side, one was on the other side or something, don't know if it's possible, but that's what's in my head. I don't know what's in their head.
I was a little confused. Did you say that you didn't want the contractor over there to lose their contract? But it's always broken and there's only three items in it or, but then you said you're interested.
Hate to see a current contractor lose their contract, but. Based on the level of service they're getting, I have to provide a better level of service to the people who want to use it. So I would be more than willing to go to a different company over there to get an increased level of service.
Thank you for the clarification because I was a little, it sounded like both ways. Um. I don't want to spend money putting an outlet in. So if you can find a place that's going to work anywhere in, in the building, that's not obtrusive. I'm fine with that, um, as well as over there. Um. But again, I would give staff the direction to you come forward with an idea.
We'll come forward.
Yep, I agree.
Okay, and then when we do that, then we can decide what we want the vending machines. You could have a cold vending machine like Commissioner Christopher was suggesting. And they go as far as you can get ice cream in them, frozen microwave stuff. Uh, you know, anything they sell in a convenience store, they can put in one of those machines.
Well, I know we sent out a spreadsheet, um, asking people what they would have liked to have seen in a vending machine. I don't want to hold the contractor. To exactly, we need, you know, make sure you put hot pockets in there, kind of a scenario. But, uh, I don't know that the standard protocol, people that answered the survey had any idea that there could be hot cocoa and chicken soup and ice cream. And again, I mean, that's, that's, if you can get all that out of two vending machines, hey, whatever. I just don't want to have to go three, four, twelve.
Yeah, no. So we'll look at two and then kind of see what we can come up with.
Make it all healthy food so that we can get extra points on our health insurance.
No chocolate.
Just kidding, Rob.
Well, that's actually kind of, because we used to have the old vending machines and annex one right by the health department.
I said, and then I just take that spreadsheet and or, uh, if we need to send it out with new ideas, fine. But I think it's got enough ideas. Just make sure you remove the one anonymous comment. From the person that added something into the beverages that probably shouldn't be in the beverages.
Okay. Uh, they do do juice, milk and all that other stuff too. I said, they, they, it's.
Uh, it to me, it's, yeah, but it's what you're selling.
Right, exactly.
If, if you're not selling it, take it out, put something that you will sell.
Yeah, exactly. I don't think he's going to want it. They're going to want that to be.
Well, that's, I said, I want, I want to make sure they're successful.
Right.
And I don't, they're not going to be successful if we start putting stipulations because one person has a fetish for a hot pocket.
All right.
And they sell one a month.
Yeah, they better eat a lot of hot pot.
That's, that's my point. So I would like it left open to what's, what people are buying.
Okay, okay. Well, we'll look at, we'll look at locations and bring back some locations. Okay, um. We have currently have more, but let's just talk about, we have two openings right now in public works. We actually have more than that, but we're going to address the two first. Um, our senior, our, we, our senior engineering tech, which is one of our inspectors. Hey, went to work for the poor, our, the core. Um, about a month ago or so. And our traffic technician also retired, uh, as of Thursday. So we have two open positions. What we're proposing is we only fill it with one. We create a hybrid. We, and that would be, we would have the inspectors do the signing and that kind of stuff. I don't necessarily want to, I mean, we would keep it at that way. I feel a hundred percent confident that it would work. But in case it doesn't, I don't want to take that position off the work chart. You know, right now though, we see that we could do it without it. Reason I'm saying that is, you know, the, the sign technician is very important. Position. So is the inspector because they both deal with, sign deals with safety and we're regulated by a lot of that. The inspector deals with also with safety, but also they deal with our federally funded projects. So, um, but I'm not advocating for two positions, only advocating for one right now. Because we're looking at ways to operate more efficiently. Everybody has to, we've always kind of been the ones that have stepped forward and done that. So we will continue to do that. So at this point, we would only like to fill the one position if that is okay.
I myself am fine with that and I want to thank you for. Um, looking at ways that restructuring when the opportunities become available. Um, and, and encourage you to do that. Continue doing that as you move forward. So I personally am good.
And thank you.
Which one?
Uh, the senior engineering tech.
Okay.
They're both union positions.
Boy, you sure know how to say it just right. Of course. No, um, thank you. And you know, as we move into, you know, more maintenance in the future, knowing that the funding available is going down. I, I can't thank you enough for, for planning at the opportune times to do that when it presents itself. So thank you very much.
Yes, we will, we will be, we will continue to look at that through fruition.
Mm-hmm.
And this was one of those opportunities that presented.
Which is a perfect time to, yep. Uh, question, you mentioned five truckloads gravel on Latticus to get the road back into position. What, what happens to the gravel when the rock or the water goes across it? Does it wash all that gravel into the ditch or do you have to go dredge ditches or what happens to all the gravel that washes away?
Washes down the ditches. Sometimes it washes on your private property, gets posed, deposited in places. It just gets spread out all over the place.
So it's not like you have to go take a dozer out there and clean ditches up afterwards, kind of scenario.
No, it's, it's scattered all over. We end up having to bring in new rock.
Okay.
But somebody's going to have to clean that ditch sometime.
Or something.
We clean the ditch.
I say, there's, there's, uh, the ditch in front of my house is probably two feet of gravel. From twenty years of blade work on the road and, and road or cars pushing it off.
Yeah.
Driving sixty miles an hour. Uh, clarification on the courthouse bottled water filler. I just want to make sure that we're hooking that to a new pipe and not an old pipe. Perfect.
Yes.
Flavor is, uh, important.
That it is, yes. Um, so Title twelve, as we're working through that, we need to do C P on Title twelve. So this is a plug. I mean, I'm hoping that, um. Lori will be able to sign the C P. Cause again, it's more of a technical paperwork thing for this because each project pretty much does their own C P anyway. But it's just something that we have to go through. And I have one more thing that isn't on my list that I just kind of wanted. We are looking, we'll provide something for the board. We talked a little bit about it, if you remember during budget, about the climate, uh, the building stuff.
Oh.
Um, and it is a cost. It is a very serious cost.
Did you get my email this morning?
Yes. And if you remember, I kind of mentioned this to the board during, we were preparing for this. We didn't realize there's money. But here's the problem. It isn't just about making the upgrades. So if you have any legislative pull, it's not about just that. It's about the monitoring. Of all your stuff and all your utility use and everything else. So basically you're almost to the point, I think we can absorb it in-house. We'll see, that's our goal. But you have somebody that tracks. I mean, we track our utility bills, but now you're tracking everything, daily use and. Now you can do that easier, there's no question, by putting in a fully electronic system. Some of the stuff we, we actually worked out well, that we replaced a lot of our units to allow for that. Because now they all have digital readout. The older ones do not, but the new ones do. So that will help us too. So we'll let you know maybe, uh, next week or maybe the first, around the first part of next year. What all that entails. We've done some research. We fit into tier two. Um, all three of our main buildings fit into tier two. It's not as, uh, it's not as strenuous as tier one, but it still has. Pretty much almost the same amount of reporting and all this other stuff and all the other upgrades.
Okay, um, yeah, for my teammates, I forwarded him over a Paul Jewell, uh, request. That was kind of like the jail upgrade request that they had a while back that I sent to Carmen. Um, Wasak is looking to try to make some legislative changes to help counties. Um. With this climate initiative with and or funding and or potentially changing regulation to help facilitate. So I sent an email to him to, uh, ask him if he had the time to draft something that we could submit to Wasak. For them to be able to compile data to make an effective art. So that's why we're having this conversation.
Yeah, we, we were already heard about it, been looking into it. It takes effect twenty twenty-six. Um. And until you forwarded that, there's been no talk about any funding for it. Just here it is. Make it work.
And that might be the way it ends up, but I believe we might be luckier than most if we still had the old annex. When that comes into play and now you're re-insulating walls and putting triple pane windows in and trying to bring that up to the current climate.
Yeah, we would be in trouble.
You'd be in trouble. You add the old economic development triple wide and, and your expenses would be absolutely through the roof.
Yeah, the good thing is, is at least we only have two buildings we have to worry about because this thing is, you know.
It's there.
It's there. It's already meets all that stuff. But the other ones do not and.
Do the buildings at the fairgrounds have to?
No, they do not. They're not occupied a hundred percent of the time and they're too small. I mean, the exhibit building and like the, you know, some of them aren't, but they're not an occupied building.
So even Dallas Park Community Center wouldn't qualify.
It's too small.
Okay, good.
Right now it's too small. Now they're talking about bringing, you know, all of them in.
Yeah, they, they will in time.
But it, it's still a long ways out.
You'll have electric lawn mowers and electric, uh, everything. So, yeah.
Yes, we'll do less, but yes, we'll be happy.
Thank you. Hate to drop that on you. I was actually given that on the fourth and I've just been so busy. I haven't had a chance to reach out to you. So.
No, that's okay. We know it was.
Do when you can do it and, uh, we'll get it on and see if we can make some change.
Yeah, we'll, uh, put a presentation together, let you know what it, what it all entails, all the different things we got to do. There'll be some options on which way to go. You could mitigate some things by doing other things. You know, you could say, okay, we're going to do away with, you know, natural gas. But are we going to keep the natural gas? We're going to add more solar panels. So there's, there's given, taken some of it right now.
Do we get credit for the solar panels we already have?
Uh, no, they're a requirement for the bill. They were a requirement for this bill.
I thought we oversized.
We did, uh, because it only made sense.
Right.
But we, it's building by building. The building stays. So this building's fine. The problem is, is the other two buildings.
That don't have anything.
That don't have anything. The Pioneer Center and the courthouse.
Public Works Facility doesn't have to do that. It's stuff.
Too small. Really?
Wow.
Luckily it only goes down to twenty thousand square.
Wow, okay.
Tier two. I mean, it, and then they've looked at a tier three, which goes from ten to twenty. Again, we're still exempt. Until you go to a tier four, which is quite a ways out. And then that's, you know, we'll probably rub, roll, wrap in all the buildings. That's still a long ways out. Thank goodness.
Okay. Any questions for Public Works? I hear none. Thank you both for doing your work and thank your staff and have a happy holiday. Next up is, uh, Director Van Cleve with Department Updates from all of his various departments.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We'll start off with, uh, some HR. Um, I did send the questions out uh, last night. So if there, we can fine tune in between now and then, or right before we get started, uh, tomorrow. So, um, and if we decide to have a second round or a second interview, I've just able to split them. So, um, just want to make sure you got that.
I like some of the second questions that I would kind of like to ask on the first interview. Why, why, why first interview and second?
Well, the first interview, I, and, and we can do that. Absolutely. It's just the first interview. If you notice the first five questions are kind of getting to know the applicant and then, and then it gets down in a little more technical. And then the second set of questions is quite a bit more technical. But I mean, you could, you could switch them or we just need to come up with eight or nine. So, um, so if one of those is works better, we can, we can work it in. Um, currently I'm waiting for the year to get over, but I'm working on a twenty twenty-three risk management report. It'll kind of grow as we go, um. I have, you know, examples from other counties. So, uh, some examples of what will be in there. For instance, workers comp claims, uh, this year we've had eleven so far. Twenty twenty-two, ten, twenty twenty-one, eleven and twenty twenty fifteen. So, and then I can break those down by paid, paid claims, time loss claims. And so in a report, I would probably go into much more, will go into much more detail. Insurance claims with the new carrier, WCRP. We had, we filed five claims. Uh, they paid three. Uh, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two with WRCIP, the old carrier. And it was kind of a hybrid year. That's why it's two, uh, that we had filed eight claims and they, and two were paid for roughly the same dollar amount. So I think, um, our experience has been, uh, WCRP was excellent move on our part and thank the commissioners for that. Um, Commissioner Christopher kind of spearheaded that move in a couple of years ago and they are a great group to work with. They provide substantial amount of no cost or low cost training. The sheriff's department has uh, taken advantage of most, if not all the training that, um, that we pushed their way. Senior Services has done so as well. Um, in twenty twenty-three, I attended the spring and summer conferences. As did Commissioner Christopher. He also attended the fall conference. Um, twenty twenty-four, Casey will attend the spring and fall conferences, uh, with us and, uh, Commissioner Zoller, you will be the, um, alternate on the board. So I, uh, encourage you to attend. Um, if you, if you were gonna pick one, I'm sure Commissioner Christopher would agree. The summer one is where they set the rates for the next year and they go into great detail on the, the type claims and all that kind of stuff. So I think if you're.
Isn't the summer one in Skamia County?
Once in Sk- first one's in Pasco and then one's in Skamia. Yeah, and the fall one's up somewhere.
I was gonna say, I think that.
Yeah, two of them are fairly close. So, uh, I really encourage you that. So you'll learn a lot about the pool and, uh, how they operate at that, uh, summer. And then I'll kick it over to Casey. Talk about some other training and some other issues.
Yeah. So just to follow up with some other training, um, we are finishing up the online, um, live uh, anti harassment training tomorrow. So if you guys haven't attended, please do so. Um, the afternoon session from one to three includes the supervisor training at the end of the session, the last thirty minutes. Um, the registration link is in the emails that I have sent out. And if you need it again, I can forward it to you. Um, this is required training for all employees. And so there are employees that have not been able to attend the training that were provided last week and that will be provided tomorrow. And we are working with, um, Janet on providing a recorded session. And so then anybody that wasn't able to attend that they will be able to do, um, more of an on-demand training so that they can get that certificate in their folder because the anti harassment training is, um, becoming more and more important. So, so if you did not attend it last week, please do so tomorrow. Um, we are also working with them on providing more, um, on-demand training for employees. So they can attend those for new hires, things like that. We can provide those links to employees and kind of get back in the swing of, of the training that needs to be provided for employees and give them a variety of training that they can attend as well. As far as training is concerned, that is it. Uh, open enrollment is over. I'll kind of give you a little overview. Um, we have two hundred and sixty-one employees that are covered with benefits in the PEB system. Um, there is a total of five hundred and fifty-one people. That includes employees and their dependents. Uh, we're gonna have a hundred and sixty changes for long-term disability. Those are people that have optional coverage. There were thirty-four people that signed up for the flexible spending account next year. Um, six employees made online changes and ten employees made in-person changes for any medical or dental changes. So, so it's um, it was busy and there's a lot of changes that still need to be made before the next payroll. But it was good.
Okay. Any questions about that? Uh, Commissioner Anderson, we're still looking into, um, the planning director applicants where they learned on the job. But I, I got this yesterday and I'll, I'll send you. So I won't go through every line, but um, it's the outreach summary that, uh, Proffman provided is so they put out a blanket, Oregon and Washington, um, counties and cities. Um, they also do careers in government, LinkedIn. They had fifteen hundred and seventy-seven impression, impressions, twenty-three link clicks. Facebook, two hundred and twenty-three impressions, job boards. They had eight hundred and seventy-eight announcements that were mailed to nine states. All city and county planning departments in nine states and sixty-three hundred emails were sent out to their, to their, to their email list. So it's, it's a substantial outreach now, whether all of our applicants learned of it through this. A lot of this stuff goes out as does NeoGov to the job boards indeed and other places. So it's hard to tell. You know, which one put it on there.
Are we allowed to ask during an interview?
Yeah, we ask. We, we, we get it on the application. It's in the package you have. It's one of the questions. Sometimes they mark other, so we don't know.
That's what I'm saying. Are we allowed to ask?
Yeah, we can ask.
Just so we can gain better knowledge of.
Yeah, absolutely. Anything else for HR? I think there's no questions. IT Department, I sent the report out last night and so Randy's here to answer any questions if you have any, if not.
I did read your report at six oh five or whenever you sent it. I felt like responding back, but it's after five o'clock. We're about this tomorrow. I do not have any questions with the report.
And the reason I asked Randy to, to send that report on that training subject was you've heard, uh, Randy and I talked quite a bit over the last year about the department and cross-training and how to, um, change the org chart and bring people in, grow our own, that whole concept. And so, uh, we've kind of went through different, different, um, scenarios and, and, uh, let the soup cook for a while. And so we're gonna come back in January to workshop and talk to you about possibly making a fairly minor adjustment to the org chart. Supes on. So, um, uh, so I asked him to do that so that, uh, when we come back in January to workshop, it'll kind of tee up on where we're at in the process. So.
I appreciate you for, for doing that. Training our own is going to be important and I would imagine that what, however you have that will probably not be how you have that two years from now. Cause it will be a work in process. You're, you're gonna find issues that might creep here and there, but.
Life is a work in process.
Yeah, right. So, but I, I appreciate you really.
Okay. Any questions for, for Andy or IT? Alright, thanks. I also sent out the code compliance report from George as well as, uh, an example of a voluntary compliance. I want to congratulate and compliment George for that. That was the direction he was given when he was hired. Voluntary compliance is the preferred method. And I think he's had great, has great success with that. And we wanted to show you um, the before and after pictures of one of those. And so, um, if you have any questions, George is here. You can answer them.
No, I did. I read that one as well. And, and the pictures of before and after were absolutely amazing for whatever eight months, nine months of of being the system. I, I
Mike's not on. Um, you want to commend George for doing that? Um, and to just give George a head up, heads up, I did have a conversation um, with a local resident, uh, that has issues with their neighboring property. Um, that their neighboring property used to be used by squatters and they have a very good relationship with their neighbor. They're trying to facilitate and help in any way. They're not trying to turn it into a code compliance case, but they want to know what is available, what resources might be available that they can help their neighbor clean it up and whatnot. So I told them to reach out to you. Um, and, um, and see what knowledge base you may have uh, to help them move that along. It sounds like um, the owner died and willed it to their sister or something. The sister didn't know she even owned it. Um, the title's messy. It's got two years of delinquent taxes. The sister doesn't want it. Um, but the, the squatters are off, but the mess is left behind and they're just looking for resources or knowledge or something you might be able to help with. So when you get that phone call, um, you know where it came from. And although it is probably won't be a formal complaint. Uh, if you could just share any knowledge you may have with them to help them get voluntary cleanup, that would be great.
Just out of curiosity, was this in Appleton?
No. Um, west of ninety-seven, north of Pickleton Highway.
And I don't know if this would qualify, but we do have those containers and the transfer station, um, vouchers that, you know, we want to make sure we use.
Well, that was the question I wasn't sure of. So I didn't offer them. Uh, not my place. That's George's place. And I don't know, that's kind of why I brought this up. I don't know that this board has set a policy that there must be an active nuisance case in order to get a container. Uh, or a voucher. Um, or if they can be given to people that are voluntarily working cleanup that aren't a case. And I don't know if that's something this board even wants to take that into consideration now or have discussions later or what, or if we're just gonna leave it to George to make executive decisions. How he feels they're best used. I'm fine with any of the above.
Maybe a compromise in there is to let George work through it for six months or so and then come back and tell you how he applied those vouchers and, and under what conditions. And if that's not in line with what you prefer, I mean, you can tell us now if you want and we can do a policy, but.
Right. This person was, uh, the neighbor spent ten thousand dollars to get the squatters off the neighbor's property. Um, which had to literally buy them out and everything else, but the cost of cleanup. And they were looking to see if there's any county resources. I explained gift of public funds, county can't provide you with resources. But Republic has resources available on a, as needed. Check there. Um, I just didn't know.
It's a great addition to the recent contract, um, having those vouchers and the containers, um, really and will be beneficial, um, for those folks that are.
I told, I told this woman to, to reach out to the nuisance cleanup people that could probably do the job way cheaper than the county. It sounds like the woman that owns the property that doesn't even live in state is two years behind on taxes. And this might soon become county. Um, which it's, I would, I would much rather not be because we know what that cost would be. Um, so I was just trying to brainstorm with her on how to clean up the title. It looks like there's an investor interested. How to potentially set up a GoFundMe account, reach out to the nonprofits like my own that might be willing to go help. Um, and that kind of thing. But I sent her over there because he might have more knowledge on this than, than I do obviously. I just wanted him to be aware that it's coming.
Also want to compliment George that, uh, uh, that quarry issue, uh, he was took a lot of, a lot of, uh, legwork to, to, uh, yeah, with all parties, all different.
Voluntarily stopped, right?
Yeah.
Through the work.
Yeah.
And hasn't started back up.
That we, I, I haven't heard anything from the neighbors. So I, I, I'll take that as he stopped.
Big effort on George's part, working with the state agencies and the neighbors and the, and the, uh, property owner and the.
Is this the Rattlesnake Road property?
Yeah. So just want to compliment him on that effort.
It's been a learning curve, that one especially, um.
Yeah.
Not an easy individual to work with in the first place.
Was that?
Not an easy individual to always work with in the first place.
So, yeah, yeah. Another good example.
I would imagine most of the people that he asked to work are not an easy individual to work.
Any questions for George? Great job, George.
Yeah.
Absolutely. No further questions?
No further questions. Thank you, sir.
Alright. Solid waste.
Blowing through it today.
Yep, I do have one question for her.
And others, some things she want to talk about, uh, you want to go first?
Want me to go first?
Uh, I don't have a lot. It's not, I'll go first. Um, not much of an update. I'm still working on the same programs that we've talked about. You guys, I think, signed a contract this morning to keep our radio ads going. Um, and I'm working on the contest for the money from the EPA and that is due in February. And you might've seen a survey go around and that is in relation to that as well as some grant, um, requirements. We're supposed to have community participation and do some different things. So I thought a survey might be a good starting point to see what the community wants to participate in.
And the grant, grant pays for those.
The, the question I had on the survey is there was a question in there about, uh, do you like or something the murals? And I'm, I'm in my head trying to think of what does the murals have to do with solid waste or recycling or anything else?
So, yeah, I'm hoping to do that as a project to do an educational recycling mural somewhere in the county. I have, I've had a few offers, but in order to get the grant to approve that money, they are basically asking me to prove that it's more cost-effective and more wanted by the community than a billboard is. So I was just kind of testing the waters there to seeing if people even want another mural or if they think it's dumb or.
She, we've been kind of hesitant to bring it forward till we got, until she's been doing a lot of research and this was her idea. So she's meeting with artists and Republic. And, um, Michelle and Ecology to see if they can participate. So she's, it's really something she's taken on on her own. Um, that, uh, Republic's a big part of our community and, and to have, have, uh, a mural depicting recycling and natural resources and those kinds of things could be exciting. So I told her just to go for it and see what she can come up with. So, so asking. So some other things in solid waste, uh, Mackenzie, Jill and I are working on the projects. We aligned at the workshop. Um, so we've identified leads and who's taking which projects. Um, part of that, those projects are reconstituting, I guess, or reanimating or whatever the word you want. The Solid Waste Advisory Committee. So my question to, to you is, do you want us to reach out to see if the members are still willing to serve? Should we start over? You want me to send you the list and then we can talk about it again because there's one from each of your districts. There's city representatives. I think there's fifteen people on there. Um, at large. So one way would be to see if anybody or all of them are interested in, um, in meeting again, or if you want us to start over and so trying to get a little direction before we jump in that.
What has it been? Three, four years now?
Um, I don't think, I think it's been two. The, the plan is up in twenty twenty-five. So we, another reason to get them going is to, it's gonna take all of twenty twenty-four to get the work done and, and get that ready to go. So, um, it's been a couple of years.
Is it a mandatory fifteen? That's a lot of people.
Uh, and that's just around there. But it could be twelve. Uh, I got the list from, from the man. So, uh, it's a big, it's a big group.
I think there's only three county at large.
Yeah. All districts had, there was one school.
And I don't know who mine is. I know yours is JP.
Okay.
Like to see the list. Um, also, um, we're coming into twenty twenty-four and we need to have a conversation about all of our boards and what's coming up. And maybe we need to put something in the newspaper, uh, saying, you know, all these boards are gonna be up. Please apply by. January fifteenth.
I'll get the list to you. Okay. I contacted the Washington chapter. It's along, it's, it's her professional association. Washington chapter, the Solid Waste Association of North America, seeking examples of city and county RFPs for groundwater and air testing, preferably in landfills. And around about way I received a number of examples from, from counties in this state that have been our, or are in post closure, which is very helpful to us. So the plan is David Kavanaugh is going to help me look at the technical aspects of the testing. We also know what ecology's concerns were last time, so we can build that in. We're going to take a look at it. Some of these RFPs just for groundwater testing and air quality testing are a hundred plus pages. So he's going to look at that for me. I would do the rest of, of the RFP if it's more than we can do. I'm going to come back. I'm either going to come back in January and request an RFP for testing services, or I'm going to request an RFP for someone to help us develop an RFP for testing. Because they.
Didn't we, didn't we do that in the past though and had someone come in and do it? And so don't you have an example RFP?
No, we couldn't find it. It's been quite a while ago. We just couldn't, we couldn't find it. And I was hoping to be able to use the consultant we used at that time, but it's been so long ago that.
We don't know that either.
We were advised to, to go out and do an RFP, so.
Ecology wouldn't have a copy of it, what day?
No, but they sent me some ones that are newer than ours from some other county-owned landfills and post closures. So that should be really close to what we need, we're hoping.
I mean, this thing's really small.
Yeah, it, it's, it's, yeah, it's not the exercise of the landfill. It's the, I think we have five wells. It's the, you know, it's, it's that. And we only need one or two rounds of testing, so just to see where we're at. Get another baseline for, for ecology, so we can, we've been in post closure a long, long time. So again, I'll either come back with an RFP for the testing services or an RFP to get someone to help us to develop an RFP, so we can get this moving and done. So that's where we're at on that one. I think that's it for solid waste. Any questions?
So always.
Nope.
Nope, nope.
Thank you. Kenzie, you're doing a great job.
Yeah.
Natural Resources, I sent some applications. We received, sent those to you last night. So at some point, maybe at the workshop, if there's any you want to interview, we can move forward with that. Richard continues to provide support to the Switzer Project, mostly in terms of the financial group. And he's working with Lynn on getting the reports for the Bundo Creek Project. So he's had some challenges getting some reports that we need, but, but he tells me he's working on it. So that's really where we're at with natural resources.
Have you guys had a chance to look at the applications, the three applications?
I'm really surprised that we're getting as many applications as we are from far, far away.
Seventeen total.
Yeah.
And I mean, on paper, these are various levels of qualified, least experienced in out the field. So, yeah, it's.
Well, and one of them is far away, but sounds like is moving here anyway, kind of scenario, so. But yeah, it's, it's a lot of out of state. Which worries me with the last out of state. How many of the out of states changed their mind after you give them the job offer, but we can only move forward how we move forward, but.
If I can look back to individually to see if there's consensus on some of these, if that'll be.
Well, that's what I was checking to see if there was now, or if you want to do it offline, we can do that too. You have opinions?
Always have opinions.
Don't we, don't we all?
I don't mind doing it offline.
Yeah, I'd rather, I need a little more time to finish reading.
Okay, okay.
Right, thank you. And then Jane is batting cleanup and.
With lots of paperwork.
It's fun paperwork. For data nerds like myself.
Well, I will not call you a data nerd, otherwise I'll have to go to Casey's train. I was unaware of that, so.
I was surprised you weren't on there.
I was unaware that, that, that we had to do that.
Speaking of that, I don't, we didn't talk too much about that. Part of the, it's been a couple of years since we've done this and we need to do more of it, the training, talking back to the training. We want to see how many people voluntarily take the training and then follow up with the recorded session. You know, these really need to be mandatory and we're trying our best to get as much compliance as possible. But moving forward, depending on participation, we may need to talk about. It's just important to the insurance company, we have these trainings, so. So far, so good. People are, a lot of people are taking the training, so that's good. Over to you.
Alyssa, can I get the presenter's table? Just real quick, so. I handed you three papers. I will display another geographical map. It's really hard to print, doesn't really show clearly. But the chairman has mentioned a few times about how it would be nice to see if people actually view the documents that I put together for the board and the public, the budget books, the supplementals, the quarterly reports and everything that I put out there on the webpage. So I've been working with Shelby and IT to make this data a reality. It's been a learning curve for me, so bear with me. This was, you know, my first go at it. I'm positive that I could do more with the data as, as we go forward and I spend more time with it. At this point, I was only able to figure out how to go back quarter to date. So October fifth to December fifth is what you have. I haven't figured out if I can go back and grab the entire year yet, so we'll start with quarter to date. The first page that you have is a graph, a bar graph showing the twenty twenty-four budget page and the twenty twenty-three budget page and where the users are accessing that from. Obviously, the majority in Washington, that makes sense. Oregon, right, right across the river there are neighbors, makes sense as well. California, Illinois, Arizona District, Washington DC, Nevada, Idaho, North Dakota, Louisiana.
DC makes sense to me because maybe as congressional staffer. Washington.
DC makes sense, California makes sense because it's probably search engine bots.
Well, actually, I would, I would, I mean, and I can look into who those users are and where and, and they're, and I could drill into their IP address even, but I've met people through conference from all of these areas and I know that I personally go search out other counties that are similar to my size and I go see what they're doing. So I'd be willing to bet that these are actually financial people from other counties and other areas. You know, I happen, I met a few people in California, Texas, North Carolina, DC, those types of places.
And honestly, I think it filters out the, the trollers or the drones that are going through.
I would imagine Google Analytics, it does do that at this point. I just, I don't, I don't know what certain.
It does when you pay by the click, it sure does.
Page two breaks down that data to, to the level of city. And as well as added more pages. So without knowing, the way I set up the webpage actually worked out really well for me for this analytics. So I was able to, to separate who's going to the twenty twenty-four budget, who's going to the twenty-three budget, who's going to the quarterly reports and the budget adjustments. The way Google Analytics kind of works it, if I just typed the fiscal, if I just tried to search the fiscal services homepage, then I got very little information because people access the webpage through and, and my information through other avenues within the webpage. So if I followed those paths, which I could, and I did for a little bit, you know, they went to the commissioner's webpage to get to my page. They went to senior services and got to my page. They went, you know, other areas to get to the budget documents, just probably looking around, researching and then landed on my page.
Is it, is it surprising that more people from Goldendale than White Salmon? I mean, it's pretty overwhelming.
There's a lot of county staff in.
I was going to say, unless you removed county IP addresses from your search parameters.
I, I would, I tried, I did look in because I knew that, that was going to come up today, that, that it would probably be assumed that it was staff. Maybe a couple, the Goldendale users are, well, and the data I was looking at was with today's information was fourteen users. And so I'm not sure that all of that is staff.
Right. And as I said, I'm sure there's, there's staff as part of it. There's regulars.
Yes.
Citizens that are regulars. And then there's the standard, you know, occasional looker.
And, and the reason I say that I don't know that, that I would, I wouldn't jump to the assumption that it's staff is because staff has all the information in a shared drive that's easier to access for them with a one-click situation versus going out to the webpage to pull my information. Because I give them everything in an email as well as put in our shared folder.
Right, but I'm, I'm talking staff as the multitude of people that are listening on Zoom that may not have access to your shareholder that might be listening and then they go look at it the way there's.
Yeah, absolutely, that could be. I, I, I think everybody that has access to what I send them are all accounting, you know, so the office clerks, the budget group, you know, it's, it's a solid like fifty-five people and the directors and electors.
Said this, but are these unique hits or are these one person looking at it two hundred and twenty-seven times?
Um, I could sort that out. It's not one person, you know, clicking into, in this situation, twenty-five hundred clicks into the twenty twenty-four budget. So those, those event counts are actually clicks into the budget. Yes, there are people that are going back and looking, but as Randy had commented and that's almost, that's almost better, the same person going back, like found some good information, is trying to understand and I would definitely take that. I, you know, I can, I can sort out how many, how many users are looking at, at the page, but as a total, just the twenty twenty-four budget and the twenty twenty-four budget is only those Cianta reports. It's not the budget book yet. So it's, it's actual detailed information that would be challenging for somebody to understand, but there's a thousand views.
I don't know about you guys, but it's encouraging to me. I mean, we often think, is anybody looking at these documents? And it's good.
I, yeah, I was really, I was really excited about it.
Yeah, I, I, I find it encouraging. I find it good data to a point, but I also wouldn't want to bog you down and spend more time trying to dive into the minutia of the click.
Yeah, and.
This is a good general summary and.
I appreciate that, that, that you're not asking me to go down rabbit holes to determine if, you know, these are county IP addresses or not.
We don't have to because you jumped down the rabbit holes yourself.
Some days I do. I, I will be honest, I did spend a half a day trying to teach myself how to do this last week in preparation for this. But, you know, it's come up so many times that I, when Shelby was able to get me the information and the access and show me how to do a couple of things. Yeah, I, I went all dirt out.
Other applications like codes, how many people are looking at certain websites and pages we have and, you know, looking at the, this way, the baseline.
Well, I know I have a lot of those clicks, but nowhere near that many clicks. So I'm, I'm a small fraction of those clicks.
And, and the third page is, is really, I just wanted to see who, who's also looking, who's looking at the budget page in twenty twenty-three? Because this is where we have quarterlies and we have supplementals. How many of those people that are looking at the budget page are actually looking at the quarterly reports and, and these supplementals? And so this, this page gives you that idea of how many people are looking at all three and the finances as a whole. And then this was just kind of fun. Just shows you on a map visually where everybody is, who's checking out the annual budget from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-four.
Somebody in Chicago needs a Netflix subscription if they're.
Well, well, actually, Chicago is the headquarters for GFOA. So that wouldn't surprise me either. I, I have reached out with Katie Lugway. She's my go-to at GFOA. So that one surprised me. She's in Illinois.
I wonder, I wonder how many of these are people that are interested in our positions?
Applications.
Applicants that are looking at our budget to see, can they keep?
We can only hope.
But that's interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah. For sure.
Anyway, I appreciate Jen doing this. It's
Yeah, thank you.
Something we've talked about and that I think is encouraging personally. And it also, you know, it gives us a way to track to some degree if, as we improve transparency and trying to put stuff easy to find on the webpage and, and amount of data that Jen has put on our webpage as opposed to what we've had in the past, so.
And I will say that this, I have this many clicks into the, into these reports without doing a news flash. I have yet to experiment, experiment with the news flash and getting that alert out to everybody who subscribe to our webpage. So I, I thought this would be a solid baseline to then this next year, start using that news flash when I post the, the reports, the budget book and see how, how many more clicks we get into that.
Any questions? One thing I was going to bring up while Randy was here, but we know we're talking about the webpage. So Commissioner Christopher reminded me, rightfully so, that we've had a upgrade available to our webpage from Civic Plus. We had it scheduled once right before COVID. I think Randy and the board chair talked early in the year and asked if they could focus on the security issues and the, the board chair thought that was appropriate. So I've asked IT to refamiliarize themselves with what would be included in that upgrade and/or have somebody from Civics Plus join us at a meeting somehow in January. So we can see what's included and, and see if that is, would accomplish what you're hoping to accomplish, you know, some while ago, but a year ago, we did a survey of the departments and more about e-commerce, their interest in adding e-commerce to their offices or departments. So we still have that debt as well. So this, Commissioner Christopher has talked to us a lot about this over the years and it is important and it is free. We just need to make sure what free is and what we get and make sure it does what we need it to do and what you want it to do. And if there's any cost above and beyond that, knowing what that is. So we will schedule that in January. I only got one workshop. I've already got three items on it, so, or, or the following month if, if that one fills up. So just want you to know it, we haven't lost sight of it totally. So, but it has taken, has taken a while to get here, so.
I'm patient.
Any other questions that, oh, most important thing for me anyway, and then I'll ask you.
The sewing machine?
Hmm, yeah, well, yeah, I vote yes, my doctor vote to no. Since this is the last updated year, I want to take the opportunity to thank employees that I have the privilege of working with. Casey Elizabeth, Jen, Randy, Shelby, Curtis, Jordan, George, Mackenzie, Joe and Lynn. It's an honor to come to work every day and work with them. It's a privilege. They're an amazing group of people. Passionate about what they do, passionate about Licketack County and thank you for the opportunity. Any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you to you and thank you to your staff. You guys are doing amazing work and I can't give you enough kudos.
I agree.
Thank you, sir.
I don't know what we'd do without you.
I'm signing back. Let's have a question. This was in this blue folder. I did not review what the question was that they're updating and they were approved it, but it's not. An, an amendment to a contract with an approval from the PA's office, and I'm sure it's all fine, but I, I just don't know the subject matter.
Oh, I believe this is the.
It's EDA.
Right, it's the forty thousand that we pay the SBDC person for economic development.
Okay.
Through Richard Foster's office. I'm, I'm ninety-nine percent certain.
I just want to make sure which contract that was. And is it for another full year or?
I believe it was a two-year contract. Yep, 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 yep.
Want to miss something and then sign something I shouldn't.
It happens.
I know.
We've all done it.
Um, you guys want to go to lunch or do you want to go back and spend some time on the updated, updated rules?
Uh, if you want to do that, I'm gonna go grab them off.
Were you doing tour tomorrow?
Do what?
Republic tour tomorrow.
I can't imagine any of us are will be in planning interviews.
That and I, even if it's in the afternoon, it's that uh harassment training stuff that's mandatory to go tomorrow. It's the last day I took for that.
Uh, obviously, I'll.
Oh, one more time.
Yeah, uh, we'll be in interviews. I'll have to zoom it after. So I don't know what part you want to look at first. The the rules that you had already been given, I made made redline changes as the board requested.
This one.
Uh, no, that's yours.
Okay.
Um, take the top two pages off and you'll come to what you've already noticed.
Uh, rule four, so page seven, uh, that's, I don't, it, I jumped out at me. I don't think that's how you spell regular. I just looked at it. I was like, ah, that doesn't feel right.
Let's say the the word documents spelled it that way.
That's R E G U L A R.
R E G U A R?
Yeah. Yep, I did it. And then I tried what's in there and and it changed it to AR.
Okay.
Call the question records requires a two-thirds vote.
That was surprising to me, but yes. I had to go double check that.
Um, point of order wasn't in there, so all of this should be read, right?
Uh, more than likely the description.
Did you take some off?
There's the old one right here too. What were you speaking of?
So the only question I have is is um, if the chair's ruling is immediately appealed. Do we have that in there? So we know what that process is for appeal? Interruption, Curtis.
Um.
I don't have it perfectly.
Oh, on a point of order?
Uh, yes.
Uh, that should be um. I don't believe the process is spelled out because I've just added it straight from Robert Hill's order. But technically, if the board chair makes a ruling, any member can find that they disagree with that rule and call for a vote of the board to
Right, but it should.
Disagree with that rule.
I thought it was in there the first one and that's why I'm I'm not seeing it now.
Yeah, I don't think there was anything about order.
No, it wasn't in port order. It was just in.
It was somewhere else in appeal.
Just for.
Yeah, that's in in the all the rest of the appeals of disciplinary decisions or you know, all that kind of stuff. It's the same procedure. But I don't, it, there was definitely nothing in there because we didn't have that in. Um, I just have the notes that you wanted to add the definitions for point of order and call a crush in the old book. You want a procedure for how to appeal?
I just, I ju- you just put a thing underneath it and say an appeal of that requires two-thirds of the board. A successful appeal requires two-thirds of the board. Is there anything? Cause you're just, you put it in red. So is there anything you Xed out that?
Um, not unless you told me to remove it. Um, so I like changing up this word vice. I didn't make it right.
Okay.
I I mean, I figured that was pretty much a no-brainer. Um. You had um, like on seven, we're removing resolution, but I did leave it in there and redline it. On something else, you wanted all the wording like this, number eight of page thirteen. Page, you wanted it removed and I don't remember if I just red lighted all the removal, number eight.
Number eight.
What is it? Rule? Eight? Things change, I know, but it's things change on.
So, so you left.
Rule ten, number eight.
Yeah, so number eight, you you.
That's number nine. I know, but you're you're on the wrong rule. So there's actually rule ten. Go away.
No, I'm on page thirteen, number eight. What you said, thirteen, number eight. We eliminated all of it. And you left your, the last line in there.
Oh, I did. I did relieve the speaker's name and in the last four digits of the phone number, we'll call it when it's their turn to speak. I thought that was what I was supposed to do, but it does have, it also hex dogger. You want that out too?
Um.
I just thought you wanted to zoom teams press line stuff out.
Doesn't matter if they can stay.
I don't, I don't care either way. I mean, I would imagine we're gonna be using the speaker's name at the last four digits. The number nine, I changed that wording.
What did we say?
Well, we didn't have an answer. You wanted me to come back.
Oh, okay.
We couldn't come up with anything. So I looked at other um, areas and what kind of terminology they used and most of them use the original language. Uh, but I agree with you. It it's kind of confusing. Uh, so I I changed to this figuring it was making it not a violation on the person that spoke, but it could be a violation for us if we hear. So that's why I changed it to that and it's up to you to you guys to decide whether you like it or not. Um.
I'm gonna.
I'm listening like I did at or staff.
Yeah, I saw that. You have your original, um, page four.
It's completely out of order.
Do we have anything on or response to public comment?
No, you want to be the head of.
Okay, I just didn't know if we said, should we write, stated it a certain way. Um, I personally would do, um, I'd get rid of the first first one and and then I would change the Clicky Town County Board of Commissioners reserves the right to respond to public comment.
Take out the first line.
Take out the first sentence and then I would change is maintaining and I just put reserves the right.
Uh, so scratch maintaining and.
Is maintaining and just change it, change it to reserves.
Good with that?
Yep.
Okay.
Good with that.
No. Uh, fifteen had some typo errors, the spelling of hearing. The word may sit under number eleven.
Number eleven, base.
Uh, on B quasi judicial had a may sit and the spelling appeared. So I changed hearing and didn't read all that because, you know, come on.
Oh, yeah, the hurrying.
Herring.
Herring.
I thought it was in there twice, but I don't know that I found the second one. When, when it's done, I will.
No, no, it's right down below.
You, you see it again?
Yeah, it's under, there's two places where it says um, hearing and quasi judicial.
On the same.
Same, same one, but no, it's it's right on both of them.
Okay. I was gonna say, I thought it was somewhere else in here spelled around too. So like you said, when it's officially done, I will.
Was two, but you only found one?
I think so, but I'll go through it.
I can go grab mine.
So and then the first few pages are a separate um, are separate things that I'm bringing to your attention in case you do want them added in. Um, one of the ones that I went and looked at after we had already went through this document um, is the number four, the public comment period shall not exceed thirty minutes unless directed by the presiding officer or.
Two pages, hold on. Backside, um.
Yep, I was gonna say, put the highlights down. So it it's a matter of, do you want to set a limit for public comment in our board rules with the, the chairman could extend that when they want to, but do you want to like post a a number? Um, so that's why that question is.
I don't mind that the way we do it so that anybody looking into knows that that it could take thirty minutes when they're looking at when I want to call in because we're not doing things certain by time so much anymore.
Excuse me.
I'm just thinking from the public's perspective, perspective of looking at the agenda items and saying, okay, well, what time should I call in? At least this lets you know that it could take up to thirty minutes.
Right, but if there's nobody at ten minutes, we've moved on.
Move on.
Okay, so you're okay with adding something of that language, putting it in there, making it red so you can see what I've done?
Yeah.
You okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, to see for community forum, um, you, if you remember, I told you I took that out of the original. Uh, but I left in the word community forum. Um, and I don't remember where that was. With on the citizen comment portion of it. Um, so it was whether we wanted, I would just told you I would bring that back. Uh, so that you can understand what the other counties did when they did um, only speaking on items on the agenda. But then the once a month, they allowed a community forum kind of thing and you guys were questioning what that was. So I put it here so you can see what that was. Um, you directed me to still use the term community forum, just not have this in community forum is when we're in Dallasport or pulling some.
Yeah, community forum was gonna get added it, added in, right?
It was already in. It was redlined at the time on whether we were removing it or not from the explanation of public comment. Um, and it may have been turned black. I might have to go look at the original to see on what case that was. It was on rule two, number five.
Rule two.
Three, five.
I think comment should be uh, capitals.
So that's where community forums came in and you said, leave it in, but we're not going to be using it in this nature of a community forum. It's going to be a community forum for Dallasport or whatever, you know, whatever we do when we go to Glenwood or.
Sure, when we're down there, a meeting or somewhere, okay.
So I just wanted to explain to you what their definition of community forum was and wanted you to see that. Um, so that was the second thing that was on the new and um, then the rest of it has to do with since we, since most boards only allow comments on the agenda. Um, and it's very easy to determine whether something is or is not on the agenda. They don't need any kind of disciplinary procedure like Commissioner Anderson was trying to you know, kind of explain with the email that he received, does that qualify for excluding him from a verbal um, kind of scenario? So, um, a lot of, actually, this the RCW, let's leave out for a second. Um, that line with the seven point five in there. Um, and it's on the top of the RCW.
Okay.
Is whether you wanted something like that added to there? And then the next two pages just cover, I guess I'd say how you would want any kind of uh, or if you want, I guess my worry is that the board disciplines one person, but then tries to discipline somebody else different. There needs to be a set, okay, here are the consequences. And this is what happens for each person when it happens so that we're not looked at that we're and of course, all of that would need to go through legal review, but these are the two different ones that I found for the two agencies that do allow unfeathered comment. So I thought I'd roll them in there to see if you wanted anything like that talked about and or add.
This rule came from an agency that just has wide open public comment. Is that what you're saying?
Um, yeah, no, all of these, that came from the same one that that did this, I believe. And I like this on page two, I left number eight and number nine, one through seven, eleven through twelve, we pretty much already covered. Um, it's just these were kind of, ooh, is that something we want to add to what we currently already have in here? Um, so they're just kind of ideas, but it it's um, the two main ones here at the bottom, which is just kind of a big, very long one at the bottom. Goes over essentially any kind of a disciplinary procedure for someone that is found to not follow the rules. Uh, because if you don't have rules, you could be found that you're treating somebody differently than you would treat somebody else. So if you have a set of standards. So if you have a set of standards. If they're held to that standard, they can't. They don't have that legal.
And what's, what's hard for me with this is the language in it. Um, because set to a rule of standards, one person's standard. Under specific language would not be the other commissioner's standard potentially. And so I'm looking at this saying. Where are we going in the future? We're, like you said, we have an offense. One place where it's not an offense with the other people and we get ourselves into. Calling for points of order and calling for meetings to be held up and making decisions from our board. And I guess I'm just a simple person because. The way I see it is I was elected to hear from my constituents. It's open public forum, it's always been open public forum with the county commissioners. There's some good, some bad, and that hasn't been just recently, I've seen that twenty years ago. Where there was this standard person that had their problems that was there every week. Um, and as a commissioner and elected for your position as an adult, you politely listen. You don't respond, you don't engage and you move on. Um, and I'm, I'm worried about where all of this is taking us for the coming seasons. Where it just becomes a fistfight at our desk rather than thank you very much and we move on.
Well, is that, I, I would agree. To the extent of when you turned the boardroom into a contentious.
But it isn't contentious if you don't respond. And if that person chooses to engage in slandering, whatever. Eventually it will self-adjust themselves between the public and between no responses, it, it will self-adjust.
But in the same regard, I will call out today that in the slanderous comments made. Two of the commissioners thanked the person for their comment and one of them thanked him for their nice comment.
No, no, I, that was directed for the nice comments that were only directed at the, I didn't thank them for their overall.
And see, that's, that's the problem that we already have on the very, it's a matter of perception.
Encouraging someone to make offensive slanderous comments using a soapbox that we provide. And then if you don't want to, I mean, if, if, if it's your vision. To not regulate public comment in any way, then we need to go back to the original document and there are no more.
I feel like we're, we're attempting to regulate to death and this is going to turn into. Um, an absolute free for all with this rule, that rule, this rule, that rule, and we'll never get back to regular work and move through. Where being in many, many public meetings that have been really, really tough and hard. Growing through this, you let it go in one ear and out the other, and you realize some people have a passion of where they're at. And they have their emotions of where they are at and you let them work through that.
So what about when they make personal attacks or slander remarks to your staff?
Then I would address them, then I would address them.
Well, it's not against the rule.
No, even if it's not against the rule, I would address them and ask them to be better people.
No, no, so in here, rule eleven, courtesy all speakers during public comment and the discussions, comments or debate of any management. Shall be courteous in their language and deportment and shall not engage in discussions or comments on personalities. Or indulge in derogatory remarks and continuations in respect to any member of the board or any member of the staff of the public.
That, that is currently in there and that would be fine, but she's, it sounds like Mrs. Olver is talking about removing that.
No, I'm not talking about.
So that they can go back to speak about whatever.
I'm talking about leaving us an avenue to where we can have that open discussion. To actually call somebody else, say that was rude and our regulations don't allow you to speak that way to our staff.
Saying, so if, if that line that he's staying, even if you don't put any discipline. If that stays in, the comment earlier would need to be gavelled.
Mm-hmm.
And correct.
Correct.
And I believe if you have basic rules of etiquette, which is kind of what this is. It will not offend the standard everyday person, but a couple people are gonna have to learn, they're gonna need to change the way they make comment. In order to continue to make comment, or they're gonna be gavelled each time by the chair.
And I, all I'm saying is the threshold of where that gavel happens. I think is in dispute between us as commissioners.
So, so I think, um. That, sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, okay.
Um, I'm just looking at this next page over here and I get where you're coming, both of you are coming from, and I definitely don't like too many rules. Um, but when, and I honestly, I think the discussion. You know, I understand where you're coming from, that you don't wanna treat one person differently than another, but in, even in all these other rules. You know, the length of the period of exclusion may depend upon the seriousness of the disruption, the number of disruptions, the individual's prior record and conduct. They don't get into A, B, C, C, D, you know, it just says, it leaves some room to make decisions. In here somewhere, it said they may be removed for up to a year, where this group says you may be twenty-eight calendar days. So a month, and then below it says it can be further. Um, I think you're, we're more going towards E here, and I don't know if, if E is a different one, but the abusing and harassing behavior during a committee. And that one's.
D and E were the same, uh, the line separates the two different groups. Right, so D was from the same people that made the.
Oh, is this all part of the here?
Yes.
Oh.
So we go D and then H I and then you have friend three.
Yeah, I think.
That all comes from the same organization.
I think D is, it's too long.
Right, they just spell out what, and, and I just took it straight the way it was, I didn't amend anything.
Right, right, no, that's what I was looking at, so I'm looking at something that's, that's clear after the courtesy, um. But out of order comments, so actually courtesy should be in front of out of order comments on our list. Because once you're non-courteous, that's the out of order problem.
Which, uh.
This is, this is rule nine, page thirteen, number ten and number eleven.
So switch ten and eleven.
So switch ten and eleven, and then underneath out of order comments, um, you could put something in there, um, like. Uh, like C, um, underneath D over here and maybe, um, C and E. And F, something like that. Maybe C to F.
C through F.
Something like that, so you're given a little bit more direction, but it's not like. This is, if you say this, this is it, you say that is.
Right, and that's, that's my worry, that if you make it up to interpretation, somebody might have. A legal right to challenge you because Billy Bob didn't get that same punishment when they did X kind of scenario. But. It's open board discussion.
Trying to meet in the middle.
Well, I'm. You're saying through C through F, but. The last thing I heard from you is that you want them to be able to say whatever they wanna say.
That is what I said, and I'm trying to work through some of these things and it is help trimming some in but out. Um, because I, I think it was, you know, I know we're picking and choosing right now and it is in a final.
Well, that's why I gave you everything so that you can pick and choose.
Right.
I tried not to interpret and or throw my. Uh, the only things that I wanted in there or admit the things that I didn't, you got the whole thing from. Um, I wanna say that was Tacoma. My, my had been city Seattle. Um, cause I think it was Tacoma and the cities Seattle were the only two that had disciplinary procedures involved. Cause they were the only ones I found that allowed anything outside of incentive agenda discussion.
You know, honestly. I'm totally fine with just using number five A.
Five A?
Yeah. Just five A. And then.
Simple.
I would leave it just simple.
But how do you come across the? Discipline and the length of term, is you gonna make that up to the board chair or?
Yep.
The board chair gets to decide.
And the board chair can ask the seatmates if they so choose, but that's part of being the chair and, and managing the decorum. Hopefully we never have to do this.
So I think that would open up a can of worms, I would almost recommend not putting anything in. And addressing it when it becomes. When the chairman is, you know, Mr. Jones, please refrain from publicly attacking. Um, and they continue to do it, the board will eventually think that it needs to do. Uh, more to. Limit Mr. Jones from publicly attacking.
And you could add in there. The board chair shall import individuals, specific reason and specific terms of the exclusion. Do you wanna put at the agreement of board members or are you leaving it specifically up to the chair?
It's. One of the cities has it as, had it as any council member can discipline and evict and you have to come back to a vote of the council. Kind of scenario, but I thought it would be inappropriate. For, since we are a board of the whole, for any one member to make an executive decision. Uh, whether it's on discipline or anything else, so I, I believe it should be the board of the whole that makes the decision. And not the king who happens to be sitting at the second, center chair. Uh, to make a decision. It should be a discussion if there becomes a, uh, an issue. Um, with an individual, we. Throw it on the agenda under board pending or something for that meeting and discuss the. Topic and decide whether, what course of action we wanna do, whether that's a, a verbal warning or. Third verbal warning or a twelfth verbal warning or a written email or a. Uh, notification that, you know. Of whatever action the board chooses, I would, I would prefer that would be a. A group consensus of the board and not an act of an individual commission.
Well, I can see board chair directing the meeting and calling it out, but I do agree, you have to have the agreement of the other. You, you are a board, so you would have to have agreement.
So you're saying for any exclusions you want, because otherwise you're calling.
Any, then, any disciplinary.
Well, calling, making them stop and turning off their mic is disciplinary.
Correct, but if it happens next week, the board might wanna discuss sending them an email. Uh, if giving them a written. You know, please refrain from this warning kind of scenario. Or we are gonna have to restrict your speech or whatever you wanna, whatever the board decides. If it becomes an ongoing. Issue where they can't refrain from, um, accusations or personal attacks.
Maybe then the number E is the best thing to put in there on the out of order con, comments, E number one. E number one and number two. And three. Maybe that's the easiest way to do it, but one, two and three underneath out of work counts. And then that allows you to do it, but then.
Um, yeah, well, I would say yes, but, um, those mainly. However, I guess I would say abusive and the has it, uh, harassing behavior, obscene language. Assaults or threatening behavior, sexual misconduct, I don't know that the issues we currently have.
Um, oh, nevermind, it's already in here.
Cover disciplinary procedures.
It's under here, under what, rule nine, B, bottom of page fourteen, top of page fifteen, it's already there. See, I, I thought you, all this was already in there. It's just not. Cause you're mixing and matching, it's not perfectly smooth when you're looking through it.
So what one are you on?
Yours, ours, page fifteen, top.
Okay.
And bottom of fourteen. No, you already, you already hit on all that.
Right, I have it, I have that in there.
Yeah.
But it doesn't spell out how we get there, and I think that's the part that will get hung up across the street.
Uh, maybe the best thing to do then is if you want to put something down that you think. And then bring it back this afternoon and then we can send it across the street. And this across the street might say, you're opening the camera orange, do none of it.
And that, that's quite possible. All right, um, I'll make the changes noted. I will work more on. Uh, oh, uh, last item. Let's get to the RCW for interruptions.
So what, was that on these two pages?
Yep, um, do we wanna put in a procedure? For.
The W for.
Future. How we go about the future issues like the one we had a few years ago, or do we not? Huh? Oh, it's a RCW for how to conduct a meeting if your meeting has been. Um, overtaken by a group of persons to render the orderly conduct of such a meeting infeasible. An order cannot be restored or removed. Or the individuals who are interrupting the meeting or the members of the governing body conducting the meeting may order the meeting cleared. And continue the session or may adjourn the meeting and reconvene to another location. Um, I really believe something of this nature needs to be in here, just in case some future board wants to use that action.
So would it make sense?
I mean, it's spelled out in law, but it's not spelled out.
Right, but would it make sense to, um, put in, um, interruptions and then see, please see RCW forty-two, thirty, zero, five, zero? You know, as simple as that?
Yep.
Yeah, if we have to have it in, but I'm interested in legal review because of our elected positions, I think. We already operate under these and we can use it.
Yeah, you, we can already use it.
Yes, that, that is, yeah, we could absolutely use that tomorrow, but if the general public has no idea that exists.
Okay.
So if you go try to use it, they're gonna cry fat.
Yeah.
If it's in there. Uh, so that's what I'm saying, put that in there. In some less wizzy form. Please see RCW this, if a meeting cannot be continued because of interruptions. We will potentially follow RCW.
Okay.
So, yep. Already then. Eleven forty-nine, if anybody doesn't have anything else, we can recess for lunch.
Fine with that.
Clean up all my paper books.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, I would mo, make a motion that we recess for the lunch hour till one P M.
Oh, no, second, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to recess for lunch, any discussion? Okay, we have a motion in a second to recess for lunch, any discussion? Hearing none, all those favor recess for lunch back at one o'clock, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um we are on Commissioner Anderson stepped out of the room, but we will start without him and he will join us when he can. Uh it is one o'clock, so we will call our regular business meeting of the Click to County Board of Commissioners back to order and our first order of business. Is a public hearing. Uh to amend ordinance oh. Zero eight, zero eight, two, three, which um. Is for the District Court Judicial Services. And we. Will call that public hearing open. Uh and ask for a staff overview, but you have to get to a microphone. Basic overview would be perfect. If it works. Up on it. You'll know when it works. There you go.
Yeah, people waiting to come in too.
Yeah, we'll do that. Or we can grab that mic and haul it over to you too. Or you, I'll do it for you either way. You are the staff that handled the paperwork part, so. Close enough. Venus read from the form is fine too.
Okay, yeah, give me just a second to uh get in there, my computer is not.
Want to read from my phone?
Yes, please.
So this is the uh. It's to consider amending ordinance zero, 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 excuse me, oh, zero, eight, zero. Eight, two, three, it rescinds the resolution zero, four, two, nine, three, and amends the Click Attack County Code one sixteen, oh, nine, zero. Basically, what this is, is we had to amend this ordinance to add civil to the criminal justice. Uh wording and omit the total expenses. Clarifying that the reimbursement will be based off of salaries and benefits of the district court. Judge and personnel, and this is basically for the municipalities. To pay for.
Thank you for that. Uh with that, we will open the public hearing for receiving public testimony both in favor and or opposed to the proposed amendment before us. Uh does anybody in the room have public testimony either for or opposed? Uh to the amendment before the board. Seeing that. Uh is anybody online have any public testimony either for or opposed? To the. Matter before us today. Raise your hand or unmute yourself if you do. I'm not seeing any. So we'll give you a second chance in a second. Uh with that, I will ask if the board has any clarification of uh staff's. Remarks, we haven't had any public remarks, so is there any questions of staff? On this um. Proposed ordinance.
Would staff just go over uh the changes that were made at the last minute um by the city?
It's a second, I'm accessing it right now. So are you talking about the changes to the ordinance itself?
Yeah.
It was the uh civil was added. And then give me just a second.
Doing the paperwork shuffle.
So civil was added with the criminal along with the criminal and then the um total expenses. It basically, it was clarified that it would be the judge's salaries and benefits and the um. Uh the employee salaries and benefits. And then the equation would go into that.
But not the pencils and paper and, yep.
Non operational. And I just wanted the record to show that um this city of Goldendale had no issue taking the overall total cost. Um and including that, it was the cities of Benjen and White Salmon that didn't feel that. It that they should be required to pay for those operational costs. And uh. Throughout that, we'd always wanted to keep it equal between all three of them, and so rather than going back and spending another year working on that. We just finally said, okay. Um yours down.
Yep, it makes sense, uh there becomes a time when. Um staff time and our time. Uh becomes more valuable than two hundred dollars.
I think it was five.
Five hundred.
Per city.
Yeah.
But. Uh that's how negotiations go.
Yep. Uh with that, is there any other clarification from the board on staff statement? And I'll go back to public comment if there isn't. Alright, hearing none, I will go last call for public comment either for or against the ordinance. Uh that the three cities and the counties have agreed to that is before us today. Once again, not seeing any.
Uh question, did we, and I know the cities were upset last time, did we let the cities know that this was gonna be on the agenda? And staff and everything?
Yes, yes, they are aware um that the actual city con municipality contracts are coming up on the agenda today.
Yes, okay, I just wanted to make sure that we'd reached out and have that on the record.
Okay, with that, last call for citizen comment on this. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing to further public testimony. Uh and open it to discussion by the board if this uh board has anything else to discuss or that they want to put on the official record.
I have nothing.
Uh are you ready for a motion, sir?
I would entertain one if the board is ready.
Thank you, uh Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the amendment to ordinance zero, zero, eight, zero. Eight, two, three, wow, that's a tough one. Reestablishing policies for providing district judicial court, district court judicial services to the municipalities of Click Attack County.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve. Amending ordinance. Oh, zero, eight, zero, eight, two, three.
Thank you.
That rescinds resolution zero, four, two, nine, three. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Yeah, you caught me there on the oh, zero thing too. Um with that, we have under new business, we have Tara McLeod with Fort Vancouver Regional Library. And I was thinking she might be in person, but maybe she's online.
Hi, I decided to go online today, so I didn't have to carry my laptop and everything over.
We'll let you, we'll let you do that this time, next time you gotta show up.
I will, I promise.
So you apparently you want to give us an update on what uh you, Fort Vancouver Regional Library is. Currently doing, so uh fire away.
Okay, can you see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Alright. And uh Dan, I know you, you uh like to interject while I give, you know. While during the presentation, so feel free. Uh interrupt as much as you want, uh ask me as many questions as po- as you'd like, happy to help. So um thank you all for having me, my name is Tara McLeod, I'm the branch manager of the Goldendale Community Library. And um Ruth Shaver is the branch manager of the White Salmon Valley Community Library, but she is also the interim director. Uh public services director, and so she was going to try to. Uh log on virtually from Vancouver, but she's, she's busier than me, so. She uh she couldn't make it, most likely. Alright, so I'm here to introduce myself, but also review some of the services and resources that we provide to Click Attack County. Fort Vancouver Regional Libraries covers about forty two hundred square miles and is comprised of fifteen branch libraries and two book mo- Two bookmobiles across Click Attack, Skavina and Clark Counties, as well as a bit of Yale Valley Library District in Calat, Calat's County. And so you can see our mission, our vision and the values, all to better serve our communities. And twenty twenty three marks the fifty years anniversary of Cliff Attack County joining F B R L. Um yay, and we've held a year long reading challenge in celebration, and if you're interested, there's still a little bit more time to join it. Click Attack County, as you know, sir, is served by two libraries, we've got the White Salmon Valley Library and Goldendale. And we also have the Click Attack County Bookmobile, which is housed in uh Goldendale. And this map shows how far our regular uh services reach based out of Goldendale. Uh the Click Attack County Bookmobile covers about fifteen hundred square miles of service on a regular basis. Question so far. And this uh map uh shows where the Skavina County Bookmobile overlapped services on the westernmost communities in Click Attack County. As well as the communities that White Salmon Valley serves. And as you can see, that there is overlap uh between all of the libraries in the gorge. Go team. And this is the gold team. Uh when the Goldendale Library was established in nineteen twelve, it was only open on Saturday afternoons and it had, quote, from the uh minutes. Two ladies who managed the library, end quote. Currently, we have eight staff members plus one from facilities and a number of subs to keep both service points running six days a week. And then this is the White Salmon Valley team. Uh White Salmon Valley opened in nineteen twenty nine and it moved to its current location, uh former bowling alley in two thousand. And it is also open six days a week. So a lot, along with holding a lot of books and media, we host programs for all ages. Partner with a number of organizations to further emissions and provide an abundance of online resources accessible from anywhere that there is internet access. Some of the programs are district wide, such as the annual revolutionary reads, we've got storytimes and virtual programs. And then unique programs by branch include tacos and telescopes, game days, wild about nature lecture, lecture series and art show. Um and we also have art workshops and seasonal produce swaps. And we do provide chores for groups and individuals and uh of course a free space for the whole community. One thing that many people are surprised to learn is the breadth of resources available online. Uh resources span from professional development to test preparation and homework help, as well as entertainment and of course, more books. And these, you can see are just a few of the databases that you can access free with your library card. Uh LinkedIn Learning, formerly Lynda dot com, provides instructional video courses in education, technology, business and creative fields. While Learning Express assists in preparing students for tests such as the G E D and S A T, as well as exam prep for C D L. Electrician and plumbing, military and nursing exams and more. And there are also resources to help write a resume and prepare for interviews and to find out what kind of jobs are available and what the job market looks like for different industries. I really uh love the Ferguson's database just for that. Um and it also has um uh it provides assistance in looking for scholarships for. The industry or the the whatever they're trying to actually like get towards in education. Uh small business resources include legal information and forums, customizable demographic data reports, industry intelligent tools by Hoover's. Company profiles and more. And then, of course, uh the experience pass gives you free entry to a number of attractions, uh such as the Maryhill Museum of Art. The Presby Museum and Columbia Gorge Discovery Center. The checkout Washington backpacks provide a discover pass to state parks, binoculars, field guides and other educational materials. And along with uh providing services to our communities, we partner with multiple organizations to improve service and look for ways to support the community. Uh such as the our most recent grant that we got through uh NASA at my library and um. With our partnership with the Maryhill Museum of Art, the Exquisite Gorge Project. And I also share a business resource highlight uh for the chambers uh month and newsletter. And everyone loves data, so this is a great example of the value of our public library. Throughout the district, there are over five hundred and fifty thousand items available physically. Uh and between Goldendale, White Salmon and the Click Attack uh County Bookmobile, there are over forty thousands items physically available. So even though in the gorge, we're only ha- able to get a fraction of it. Throughout the fifteen different branch libraries, we can get whatever we need within. You know, about a week, if not sooner. So in sum, there is something for everyone, and if you're not sure where to look, you ask a librarian. And going forward, our future plans may seem basic, but they are essential to continue to improve the best service possible. Uh we are continuing to expand service to underserved communities. Uh strengthen partnerships to strengthen our communities and to expand our programs. And I do have to give a shout out because those really are glow in the dark. Uh cupcakes in the bottom left, thank you Kathy Genevieve for uh creating them, that was when our recent uh. Uh revolutionary reads uh came to Goldendale, the author came and gave a talk about Hanford and um. Then the many trials and tribulations of cleaning up Hanford, so of course I had to have radioactive cupcakes. And that was it, thank you for your time and I hope to see you in the library. Quick and easy.
Yeah. Um I guess I will, I'll start by saying thank you, not only for what you do at the library, but. Um your active involvement in darn near every organization my community has around. Um I will also freely admit that Tara is the one that brought the uh E S D one twelve apprenticeship program to my attention. Um so thank her for that and I can also open my phone and and show you, I did get a library card.
Congratulations.
So I I took a tour of uh the Goldendale Library and. She tried to get me to get a library card and and get books and I told her I'm more of an audio book while I'm driving and. Uh that I don't know that they have my genre, but you actually do have a few of my genre. So I signed up for a library card and I have not used it yet, but I do um look forward to using it on my trips back and forth to Olympia. And so thank you for your presentation today and I will turn it over to my seatmates to see if they have any questions or comments they would like to make.
Um no, I don't, just my comment is uh both the libraries are great, um. But I really enjoyed the bookmobile, it's been a great asset for our community down at Click Attack. And I love when I see him parked for lunch up on the hillside in a good view viewpoint.
Yes. It's a, one of the reasons why I love my job is because I've never actually managed a bookmobile. And so having that opportunity and really seeing how. Uh strong the community is in Click Attack County because the Bookmobile is able to connect everybody. A little bit more and a little differently, um it's, it's been a great experience.
And I would say thank you very much for your presentation and I, it's uh, it's good to see that the libraries are not just doing physical books. But they are doing a lot online as well, and so I would ask like how many um. People are logging out books or 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 doing books on their phones or their Kindles versus in uh paperback these days? What's the difference?
Uh, well, that's uh, that's a really good question, I should have had that at the my fingertips. Um our technical services department gives a a presentation and gives those numbers every uh month to our. Uh library board of trustees, um so it is in the packet and I can find it and I will send it to you.
Thank you.
But I do have to say that since the pandemic, more people have discovered more of our online resources and. Utilizing Libby, which is our most um most used app for ebooks and the audiobooks. Uh has uh continued to increase since. most-used app for ebooks and audiobooks, has continued to increase since about twenty fifteen. And physical books have slowly decreased, but not a lot.
And I will add, while I was there taking a tour of the library, there was children there playing board games. There was children there playing Xbox games. So all good things that keep kids from, you know, graffitiing the the alleyway. So you're you're doing good stuff down there, and I would just say, keep it up.
Thank you.
Any anything else the board or staff or anybody has for these things? We have a question that I will go ahead and take. Go ahead. What's protocol for computer usage? Questioning, do you have like adult content or something in mind when you ask the question?
Well, there are filters on everything. There are federally regulated filters.
Alright, let me get more clarification on the question.
Previously, like ten years ago or less, anyone, people underage, could access other computers to anything they desire, which could be content not appropriate.
Right. So the question is, do your commuters have filters on them so underage children can't get to content not appropriate or pornographic sites?
There there are extra filters for children's computers, yes.
So you have a separation or difference between children's computers and adult access is essentially what you're saying?
Yeah. I I'm not sure ten years ago, because I I just I'm hitting my third anniversary here. The end of this week.
Yeah, I thought in my tour, I think I asked the same question. And and so you you gave it to me there. So, okay. Thank you. Thank you for that. With that, if there's nothing further for Ms. Tara, we will let her go on and play with her books. And thank you very much. And if you could, you know, maybe come back a year from now and give us another update of the good things you're doing down there.
Happy to help.
Perfect. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for your time.
Alrighty, senior services advisory board applicant. We have somebody taking the lead on this. It's over there. You got to get to the microphone, then. Alyssa's like, you can have it.
And so there was an open space on the senior services advisory as advisory board, and Sharon had sent over the application and the recommendation from the other members of the board. So we just need you guys to look it over, prove it, and I'll get it on the consent for next week.
Okay. So for those that may not kind of understand, that board takes its own applications and tries to find its own members, and then they bring a recommendation forward to this board, which is what they did. I've had time to look it over, so I have no problems with their recommendation, but I don't know if my teammates have had time to look it over, so I will give them the opinion.
I could say, um, this is kind of reminds me of the EMS district where they take their own applications and they forward over kind of for consent. I never thought about it like that way before, but when I was just want to express that way.
Other than the fact that we have jurisdiction over the senior services department, you're absolutely correct. We don't have jurisdiction over the EMS.
Just the appointment process. I have no problem either. And so please put it on the consent agenda.
No issues. Okay. Done, done. Unfinished business approval of contact agreements between Clickatack County and Goldendale, White Salmon and Bigin for District Court Services. We need a separate motion to approve these contracts then?
Yep, they are different. They're going to be anything on it, or we just, because it's
just approving the contracts. I just couldn't put them on a consent since the consent was first this morning.
Right.
So these, sorry, but for the public, these are just the contracts that we have the public hearing for and created the amendment to the ordinance for about twenty minutes ago, and these are now us just approving the contracts.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, we have before us three interlocal agreements between the city of Goldendale, the city of Benjin, and the city of White Salmon and Clickatack County for the District Court Services. My motion is to approve these agreements.
And I will second.
Okay, we have an emotion and a second to approve these three individual agreements? Any discussion up? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of all three agreements, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And then our next item looks like water conservancy board updated two o'clock, so we have thirty-five minutes.
Is there anything on your agenda, or would you like to recess?
Um, I can't imagine there's something we can't get done or talk about to get us more forward in the next year, but on the top of my head, I can't think of it. The staff have anything for any kind of a board pending type of scenario that we haven't got around to yet that we could get around to? Who look, I can remove picnic tables from my since we now have one. I did get to thinking, remember, it was before your time when we did the open range of garrison. A couple of years ago, there was conversations about potentially building or putting up some cattle in the roadway signs that are, you know, the triangle signs that when they're doing, you know, they're up like this and nobody could see. But then when they're doing a cattle drive, they can hang that thing down and hopefully get a little safer transit. Why, I was coming to town, and I want to say Sunday, on Horseshoe Bend, I come over one of the many rises and right on the other side, two cowboys and a herd of cattle. No recollection that they were there, no, you know, poop all over the road or typical signs, but it got me thinking about this situation again. And eventually, one of the cowboys came back and says, hey, do you you want us to let you get through there? And I'm like, no, I'll just stay back here. Guard your six. But it it got me to thinking that, what did we do about that? What did we, where did we go with our, you know, on those standard routes, the typically have cattle drives? Is that something that this board wants to do? To provide a little more safety for those riders and and put up some temporary signage that they can go through on the way to do their cattle drive and hang them down, and then do their cattle drive and then put them back up again, because they had a lead rider or a lead truck, but they didn't have a truck in the back. And it, to me, I just think about the safety of the guys out there, so.
There, I've had a request up in the Glenwood Valley.
I think what would make more sense, and I, when we talked about it, it wasn't, it wasn't like putting signs in the ground. It would be movable signs that they could pick up at the county shops.
Um, when we were originally talking about it, it was literally triangle warning signs that were cut in half that fold up, kind of like snow zone or something that kind of fold down during the snow season. That was the original conversation. I don't remember temporaries. I remember offers from the range deputy to help facilitate and posse and, but I just don't think the the standard cowboy is going to be out there begging for help.
Yeah, and the Gilmer Valley, that's daily. That doesn't come and go. That's that's almost daily through Creps Ranch there.
So it wouldn't even be a temporary sign.
Open range, and there are signs that say open.
Right. Oh, this is right. These are, these are literally going to say cattle drive in process.
Right, but in very constricted areas like the one I'm talking about where it's cut right through the barnyard almost, it becomes a daily problem. The traffic's becoming more and more in that area. There's reasons for recreation that will probably become increase even more. So they have some daily hazards there.
I would imagine in that area, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, and maybe we need to look. But I would imagine there's open range signs because everything here is pretty well marked. I mean, it starts on ninety-seven, right? Dang near when you get off the Biggs Bridge.
And even if there's open range there, for me, it's almost like the the Lyle or Murdoch highways where you come into a community, you need to slow down, you need to be extra careful because you have a place where it is condensed, and the roads are very close.
Is there cattle and roadway signs in that area? Do you know?
No, there is not, and that's what they were asking for.
Yeah, I I I think this would be a good conversation to maybe when you schedule Public Works next week, give them an extra ten minutes and kind of put this topic on their agenda. And maybe send them an email to let them know we're going to talk about it, which if they're not already listening in, so that we can get a little more idea on what maybe are the choices that we have available and or what
And or budget.
Like I said, it's it's twofold. It's it's, you know, you got the locations like you're mentioning that are an everyday occurrence. And then you have the, you know, the Garrison Road, the Pine Forest Road, as cattle come off of Grayback and whatnot in the fall that are that are just, you know, twice-a-year cattle drive type of thing. And this one on my road is a twice-a-year cattle drive on Horseshoe Bend, and the one on Harms is a twice-a-year cattle drive. So if if we could possibly do something to provide them a little more safety as we get a few more city folks moving in that.
So I guess there's there's the it, number one, and my question is, is it the county's job and duty? If I'm driving my tractor from one place to another, I'm required to have, you know, the flashing light and the triangle and everything else. And if you're on the road pushing cows through a stock restricted area, that's what I'm looking at right now, is that on the county or is that on the landowner or the cattle owner? Because they're in a stock restricted area that they should have a truck or vehicle with, you know, a trap, you know,
Orway flashes.
Orway flashes and a triangle sign in front and back, which is just, one would think common sense, but
And they can do all the common sense they want, but with new people or with tourists who see one sign that says maybe open range, and it's like, oh, yeah, isn't that quaint? And they continue at the same speed they're at through those valleys with no regard. And that's the problem. It isn't that, I don't think these families aren't doing their due diligence and doing everything they can. It just becomes daily safety between not only the cattle, the horses, the dogs. It it just, it's just what we see as we change as a society, that we have always been agriculture. We understand it, we support it, but when new people come in, sometimes it's just that mistake that causes the big problem.
Yes, I can see it both ways. I see Commissioner Anderson's point because you're you're probably right. There's probably laws that they got to have a, you know, wide load permit and a a truck in front, the truck in back, and and everything else. It's just nor do I want to go, you know, stick the sheriff on them if they didn't get their permit to walk on the county road and or their warning signs and everything else. I just was trying to I guess, see if there was something the county can do to better provide safety during that twice-a-year cattle drive on those normal, usual roads that it that it occurs on.
I mean, do we have a a map of what roads and where? I mean, it came in front of us about changing the herd, the stock restricted area over a certain area at one point, because there's a lot of liability that goes with, you know, driving stock through a stock restricted area. And we had that, remember when it came up, we had that cow get hit just outside the stock restricted area going towards Trout Lake, like literally just outside it. And when that happened, you know, then it's the the person driving the car at eleven o'clock at night, and it's a cow who got out, and it's his fault for hitting the cow versus if it would have been in a stock restricted area, then it's the farmer's fault for hitting.
Well, there's, there's actually been a few right at the top of the grade coming up ninety-seven, but that's a, that's an open range area. So, yeah, it's the car driving on Highway ninety-seven that hit the cow that gets to pay for a new cow.
There's no signs coming up in the area of rates.
I know, I drive past them all the time, too. You have to literally go, where's, where's, where's it? Oh, there it is. It's one of those, once, it's it's a standard site. I guess it's like a thirty-five mile an hour on a corner side. I never look until somebody points it out, and I'm like, oh, there is a sign there. But there there is, and it it starts not much up the grid.
And it it it's open range all the way till Centerville Highway, and then it goes stock restricted on ninety-seven.
On ninety-seven.
I mean, I hit a deer this morning going on it, and thank God it wasn't a cow.
Well, I suggest maybe you consult the Cattlemen's Association of the Cattlemen. And get their input too, to see how, you know, everyone's protected.
Well, that's how we started with the signs was during the Garrison Road open range discussion with the roomful of cattlemen at the time, on what can we do to provide you better safety? And we had the discussion on the signage, potentially allowing the sheriff, allowing range deputies and whatnot to help assist them and completing our Tips for Country Living book, which is why we upgraded it at that point to try to educate the new people that moved here to what they can expect living in the country. So I was just, this was on my to-do list of follow-up on, because I don't know if this part of it got anywhere. So, yeah, maybe we bring this up with Public Works next week. With that, we were killing time until water board was ready. Do you have more people showing, or is it just you? We can wait till two. You're scheduled at two, but if you have more people coming, well.
Mr. Crepps is driving in the west end.
Okay, then we'll wait.
Bye.
He he called. I came in early.
Well, we are, but I don't want you to not have your full group, whatever you need. Oh, I think we've Yep, with that, I don't have anything else. So if the board has anything to speak of or talk about for the next twenty, that's fine. If not, if y'all want to recess for the next twenty, that's fine with me, too.
I can have a ten-minute recess. I'd be fine.
Hey.
Whatever you want.
She said ten-minute recess would be fine.
Okay.
I guess we don't need that. I will just, I will call it the board will be going into recess for ten minutes.
Thank you.
Uh, we will be back at one forty-eight. And during recess, we will not have any discussions of a county nature. Hey, it's one forty-eight. We are back in open session.
And Elise, during this time, head forward something to you that we received from McAd. We can have a quick discussion on that.
We're going to be even more outnumbered.
Sometime ago, we had a discussion on the McAd board about the inclusion of Gillum County, and it's so small and their population is is nothing compared to any of the other counties. They do have a member on the board, and we've been participating for some time now. It sounds like they're making the relationship more formal now. Participating for some time now, it sounds like they're making the relationship more formal now. Um, what I can tell you, working with McCad and the other commissioners, um. I don't feel outvoted and I do feel working with that board that they look at it as a regional. Um, board when we discuss issues and items, um. I've never seen where it's been unfair and more money goes to the other side. They they're all inclusive with Clickattack County and Skamania. And that's been my experience for the last year being on the board with them.
Do we know why, uh, Gilliam is interested in joining McCad? Versus staying with Morrow and Umatilla, which they seem to have a lot in common with. And Wheeler.
I don't.
I don't think this is a new development.
No, this is, this has gone on for for quite some time that they've wanted to come this way. I don't feel like they have, from what they said, they have that relationship with Morrow and Gillum. They're more advanced, they have more population. I think they consider themselves more rural like the Dawls and, um, Sherman County. Uh, a lot of farmer ranchers. Lot of the similar interests.
I think they they kind of look at themselves more related to, let's say, Goldendale right across the river.
Yeah.
Than they do to Boardman and Arlington and Umatilla. So I I understand it. They feel like they're a piece of the gorge. Yeah, I I remember hearing about this from a kid literally when I started, so.
So you've got the towns of Condon. Arlington. Are the main ones.
Yeah, pretty small.
Population is. Nineteen hundred and ninety five people.
Isn't that something?
Making it the third least populous county in Oregon.
Now he's gonna Google what first and second is.
I think Malher and maybe Wheeler.
I don't think Malher's that small.
Uh, Wheeler is one thousand four hundred and fifty one.
See that one?
And I know Sherman is really small. Eighteen hundred and seventy.
Sherman?
Sherman, yeah. Sherman's second, so Wheeler is one. Fossil Spray Mitchell.
Service Creek?
Service Creek. Kimberly's right on the border.
Yes, it is. My hunting grounds for twenty years.
Over to the clear now.
Um, back to the topic at hand, are you are you looking for board support for this idea? I I have no.
They're looking for a lot of support.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Well, I just remember you have to stay on McCad next year.
Dan said he was gonna do that one this year.
Not until we decide to do some economic development in District Three. It's a big district.
How are you ever gonna help with that?
I don't understand what you mean, like, there's probably more economic development in District Three that's going on than there is.
Yeah.
Just about anywhere else in the county.
Lot of the big stuff.
And it's all, it's the, yeah, it's the big stuff. Unless you don't consider a wind turbine economic development or you don't consider. All of the irrigated ag and the wine grapes of, you know, thousands of acres. Economic development.
You have Maryhill. Wineries.
It's only Maryhill, right? That's not in District Two, correct?
The line's so weird.
I was gonna look at a map.
It's up right now.
Maryhill is in your district.
It is, on the very edge.
I have.
I'll take it.
I have Gunkel Urcher, but I don't go out.
I was just trying to think of what other economic development, you have some, you have some new projects coming on, too.
I gotta go to our actual website.
But we also currently have a county ten year economic development plan. The economic development strategy for my area is silver panels and grapes.
In which case it's been successful.
If that's what the citizens wanted it to be, you're absolutely correct.
I do believe it went through the public planning process and public hearings and that's what it was came out as.
Find out next election season.
And they're happy out at Pickleton, you know, sensitive side.
Well, that's a different zone, yeah, out there that.
Well, that is the majority of your district area.
Yeah.
Like you, you live on the very far edge of your district, just like I do. Oh, it is close. Are you sure? The winery is in District Three. I think it's the only winery.
But I I would question. That's Gunkel, that's not Maryhill Winery.
That doesn't say where your winery.
Well, I understand it says Maryhill, that's not. Technically, Maryhill's up here.
Yeah.
And I believe it's here because. You'd have to do the actual breakdown and overlay a Google map, but, um, there was no address cards to Maryhill, so.
So the reason I thought this line, I thought this line followed, um, the. Gorge Commission boundary line?
I don't think it had anything to do with it. Because it also goes to the top of the grade. And not the gorge commission line that's literally right down on the freeway kind of thing. I don't know, that's their other thing. I don't think so.
Yes.
I mean, it's.
This one has.
It doesn't.
Line on it.
It it really doesn't.
It's just whether or not you have a single winery.
We're kill, we're killing three, three, uh, three minutes of time and a.
So you said, uh, Kevin's coming? Have you sent him, you sent him a message to see our audience?
When I was coming up Maryhill. Right as I got to the top. He was on the way.
Alright. Let's see if I got it. Yes? Uh, with our do?
No, not just yourselves, I just distributed to the commissioners because.
Send them an email, we.
Yeah.
For feedback.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now I, uh. Won't keep my mouth shut right now on how I feel about that. But yes, I had a chance to review.
Yes.
You wanna start without him or do you wanna wait for him?
Well, says he's two minutes up.
I don't wanna hold you guys up any longer.
Says he's two minutes out, we'll wait two minutes, we're good.
True, I think it's a long ways from his house, so.
Oh, yeah.
I couldn't even tell you where he lives, west of here. About all I know.
With nothing in between us and them, I don't think.
There's nothing useful about it, yeah.
I think the, his family has like the largest water right. In the county.
It's a non.
I don't even know what they do.
It's non consumptive.
Oh, is it?
So that's the the water right over, um. Lot of the area in Glenwood, that's the lake, and so they have the water right in order to raise the level of the lake. For the winter time. Um, in essence, for the, so that the grass doesn't die out, so it's underwater. And so, but it's, the problem is it's not a consumptive water right. So by numbers, yes, probably acre feet, quite probably by far the largest. But there's. People in the east end of the county that have much larger waters that are consumptive.
Do we have anybody online?
There's twenty nine people.
I mean, like Scott Andrews.
Is there anyone online from the Water Conservancy Board?
There he is.
I don't see anyone.
Not seen any hands raised or any of that. Welcome, sir, come on down. Uh, gotta give him their mic back.
Jump right in here.
Alrighty, if you are next, this is a. Uh, report for the Water Conservancy Board.
Well. We do this annually and, uh, from what I understand is we're gonna try and do it more often, is that true? Uh, we spoke about that earlier. In the. Seasons, so. Did you guys get a copy of the handout?
Yes.
I got the email with the six attachments, but it's a dot E M L, so I can't open it.
I see, yeah, I don't, I don't remember even getting it.
Yeah, I sent it in. Anyway, it's, it's basically the same thing. We spent the year doing our standard practice. You know, we try and do everything as. Legal as possible, um. Right, again. We weren't trained. Uh, the board in general haven't been trained in the, uh. Finer art of, uh, complying with all the wax and RCWs. Uh, that was Dave's job. So, uh. We've got a couple of members, Kevin's got a couple hours, he's gotta get in first. Uh, to be back current on his education. Matthew needs some. Quite a bit of education, but. I haven't heard anything from him, I put a feeler out to him, I haven't heard anything. And again, county funding has enabled us to maintain the. Spart services, uh, keep the processing fee low. Five hundred dollars. On that note, we're gonna. Adopt the Stevens County. Um. System of charging. I believe it's a thousand dollar base. Plus costs. Publication costs and, uh. Time. Because we're gonna have to generate revenue. Again, I would. Ask that the board and I realize the county. Um. Has financial si- situation going on that's. Involved, but, um. By keeping the rates low. Um, you can get to pick up the people that. Just have a few acre feet. Um. Can't afford five or ten thousand dollars to move. Spread or whatever to their water rights. And I'm afraid that those water rights then will be sold and moved out of county. Just like we're moving from Franklin County. We're moving water rights into Clickattack County. So it's, it's important and and if you're not. Up to speed on it, it it seems like a unnecessary or frivolous type thing, but, um. Without the Water Conservancy Board, there wouldn't be any. Movement on water rights in the county. That's just bottom line. We reach out. To, uh, people, get people calling all the time with questions, had a. Elderly gentleman from north of town here called. He was having problems exercising his water right because of, uh. The people ahead of him were using up all the water. And he has a surface water right. And, uh, everybody ahead of him would use all the water, so I put him in touch with the, uh. Ecology, um.
Watermaster.
Yeah, the water master, he's, he polices all these and he went up there and met with them and. Uh, they decided the best route was to drill a well. And take his water right out of a well as opposed to. Yeah, but anyway, that's.
Didn't know they can do that, that's interesting.
Yeah, you you'll have to. File with us, uh, for a different point of withdrawal. Uh, whereas he's a surface now and he'll be a. Source, uh. Groundwater source. But it's the same water rate, so. We, uh, submit our report to the. Auditor office annually, that's typically, if they just do a baby. Audit, it's five hundred bucks every year for those guys. And then if they can do the in depth, it can be several thousand dollars. So. That's, you know, kinda, it's hard to plan for, but. We completed our tasks. Maintaining the files, public documents. Generated the meeting minutes. All the public notices, so. Just, it's an expensive, complicated system. Uh, to do this stuff, so. I know, I know Scott has spent on this Benton County. Transfer, Scott has spent. Sixty, eighty hours, something like that so far on that. And we are typical a- activities we do. We do site visit and travel to different points in the county. Because, uh. Ecology requires us to inspect every one of these water rights, even if it's. The one in Franklin County, there's an Amazon warehouse sitting. Where the water right supposed to be, so. But it's a requirement again of ecology. And, uh. I appreciate that you guys approved. The grant this year. And I put in here. Uh, I mean, I would like to see that continue, and again, we will only use it when absolutely necessary. However, I put in here. Um, that if the county would budget four thousand dollars and it's for emergency use only. Uh, if. Once the money's exhausted that we have now. If we don't get applications, we don't have income. And like through the. COVID period, you know, where there's a couple of years we didn't have any. Uh, applications, so. Uh, you can run out of money and then not be able to afford travel or anything else, and that would be on an emergency basis only. Uh, I mean, obviously, you guys have to. Approve it, no matter whether it's emergency or not, which. That's, that's about it. Questions?
If questions, see the one.
Yeah, I know in the previous meetings, uh, there was some discussion about whether or not you guys would continue doing your own checking. Or if you're gonna move over to using the auditor's office, like a lot of.
I, we met out in the outside chambers here with, uh, Greg and Heather. Myself, Richard Foster, uh, and it was, they have to get it set up. They have to do something with bars codes, getting all that set up, and then we'll. Transfer, write a check, they they weren't sure, I volunteered that just writing a check, move the money would be. Seems like the easiest way, but.
Have you checked in with them?
I was just over. Uh, I called Greg Gallagher earlier. And I haven't received a call back, so.
The the reason, the reason I.
Final yet, but that's what they're moving.
The reason I ask is is we've got a, just, you know, fifteen days left before the first of the new year. And, um, having done the audit multiple times, I think it would be good to to. Separate that cleanly on January one, so that when you guys do your audit this year, you can. so that when you guys do your audit this year, you can say, you know, you can say this is how we've done it and it follows and you have.
That was kinda how we left it out in the hallway.
Okay.
Was that we we wanted to do the. Run out the end of the year, to that way I don't have to deal with auditors, uh, their A P system, which I have no idea how it operates. Um, we can do our audit with our bookkeeping and then next year it'll be. The uh. Whatever transpires from that.
And I'd also um offer any help when you do go through that audit again. I've done it enough times that if you need a hand, um, I can get you through that process.
Definitely gonna need a hand.
I know.
We're taking volunteers for doing paperwork. I spent the whole weekend. Working on this plus several days last week.
How um, how many current applications do you have?
Um. I think we have seven sitting.
Yeah.
Three Andrews, uh, Riegelman's. Yeah, I think, I think there's seven and then this new Benton County one. But a couple of those are, we're waiting for the applicant to provide information. Um, there.
And then did you do send out and already do the uh to all your members, all the contacts you had and all that? Did you get all those numbers?
I do not.
Okay.
I, I've requested from the powers to be a list of emails and phone numbers. Stuff, but I haven't received it yet.
Okay, from from your board members. Like, that's the, that's what I'm talking about. So there's a, there's a yearly survey that usually came out in December that Dave would send to everybody and it was, how many contacts did you have? And so I'll sometimes.
That'd be no.
Sometimes that was put in this thing when it got sent to the to the state. And so I just, by not seeing it in here, I wanted to make sure.
We're due on the, they went uh every two years, report to ecology. And this is a year that it needs to be done. We didn't do it last year. So that needs to be done. Don't have a clue.
Um.
What to do.
You have a meeting tonight, though, right?
We do have a meeting.
Okay.
Everyone's welcome.
I want, yeah, you can, since if everybody's gonna be there, if you could get people to answer those questions there, it may probably make it easier than hurting the cats later.
Yeah, I, I don't, I again, I, Dave always did the.
Right.
Reports to ecology and. Uh. And the audit, you did the audit before that, so.
Um.
There's gonna be a learning curve, a learning, a learning cliff. Evan, you got anything for these guys?
Do you have anything to start?
I don't have.
Nope.
I'm trying to find that.
I think you're still looking for one more thing, so.
Okay, no problem. I.
No, I did send you an email and and I was, I am truly thankful that you've kept things going and I know you probably didn't expect to inherit paperwork.
Right, no, 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 I.
Yeah.
The, just doing the job is, there's a lot of paperwork. On, you know, for these positions, but then to add the, the uh.
Financial.
Yeah, just the, the basic background paperwork, you know, the staff. I mean.
And it is a confusing subject.
Yeah, I mean it.
Yeah.
You give your whole staff a month off work and see how much they do and you'll probably be giving them raises next month. Cause it's, it's uh. It's tough without. Your right hand there.
You're looking, you're holding these gentleman up.
Sorry.
No problem.
There's a lot of emails, um, and I was trying to find him, something that would help him. I will keep looking and if I can find it, I'll get an email to you.
Okay, well, I uh.
You looking for the survey?
Yeah, the example of that survey that we did each. Anyhow.
Yeah, I, I, I've got, I think I got emails for everyone. I think I sent a list to Lori. Everybody's name and email, but I don't typically have too many phone numbers. If somebody's foolish enough to call me, then then I capture the phone number, but.
Say, I think Jake's right. If you can find a sample of the survey, print that bad boy out, hand it to everybody today, they might be able to fill it out.
So this one is um. And if it's the same, it goes to the legislature. Uh, the training you attended, the dates of the training and sponsor of the training. And then for the same par- time period, the number of pre-app application consultations or contacts you have had.
Yeah, so I re- I remember that.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah.
Again, I, if you email that to me, I might be able to adapt that.
Yep.
And fill it out.
Ordinate here, right?
That's what I did with all this stuff is I just took old copies and the ones that weren't read only. I can get into them and edit them to be more accurate than they were.
Okay.
It's better than scratching out. But we're gonna have to do something, I mean. Somebody to do the staff work. Richard helps, but he doesn't have a lot of knowledge on. You know, what has to be done. I mean, he's great. He opens, you know, runs meetings, of course, stuff like that, but he doesn't know. He doesn't know which reservations.
There's no way it could process a water.
Yeah, I mean, the uh loss of twenty years of experience is devastating.
Yeah.
So.
Hey, anything else for these gentlemen, sir?
I don't believe so. Thank you for driving all the way up here.
I'm going, stopping by and then heading off.
Are you guys staying for the meeting tonight, uh?
I'll be back for the meeting.
Where do you do the meeting, upstairs, downstairs?
Right below us. Yeah, I'm back. I'm going to top finish, then come back.
Okay. Perfect. Not dropping cows off, are you?
You're good.
Not dropping cows off, are you?
Well, they're coming.
He's probably buying fuel, cause it's cheaper to drive up there to get gas and get it down here.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Then it always provides a smile every time I drive to the competition.
Is it just off the border? You are correct, sir.
I think campaigning, I think I said this.
As you're saying, I know I didn't, uh, cause it was outside of my. My initial, anyway.
I'm glad it did.
Um, but um, but um. Well, that ends what's on our agenda unless anybody has anything to bring up that's not on our agenda. For the good of the order. I'm not hearing anything.
Um, just gonna show you this. Don't know if you saw that.
That either was covered by you. The one we had the picture standing in front of you. We talked about the loss of that, right? One newspaper article by them that came out to the Africa. And I think we're saying Jesse Mills, that just Barcelos.
I don't know what email that is.
He already sent it one page or two, two, three months.
Two, oh, yeah.
I mean, it was like right after.
Cause I know I sent them when the, when the newspaper contacted me, I told them to contact Steve at my email.
Interesting.
So I said.
And why did you message?
I, well, I think it, it went to Lori.
I did, yeah.
To Lori. Oh. But didn't come to either of us.
No, it was, it was assumed about me.
Huh?
I assumed it was about me.
I don't even understand.
That he was concerned with.
That's what I, I, it says Lori and I was like.
And and I'm like, no, it wasn't me.
I sent the, I think in my email box, it says Lori is the Kentucky County Employees Annual Holiday Party. And I'm like, what are you, are you looking at turkeys?
No, just the reference of asking for some documents and some things, I think, was. Pointed my way.
Um. Yeah, we don't. It doesn't matter.
That's.
Get, get what you need to get.
Okay, with that, I don't have anything else.
How are you going to get the other, are you gonna request the other document to the other bid from the other place? Do we have a comparison or?
Well, that was, that was the, when Rob came in, it was, can we get all of the bids? You know, just like scadet and everything else, we've seen what those bids were. We went up there, we were part of it. We've been a part of every single one of them, you know, in the past.
Yeah.
Like, you know, lob, you know, not lobbying, but talking with other commissioners, we knew what the bids are, we saw them all, and so with this email, it's like. We've never been involved, we've never seen the results.
I don't know that the previous boards ever got the bids either, but then again. The previous boards didn't, you know, look at the bills, look at vacation travel requests or anything else, so.
No.
That's not necessarily.
Doing any business, I'm sorry, I wanna be well informed.
Right.
Definitely.
And it should be my right to be well.
Well, especially when someone's coming to you, asking you for something, but then you're like, okay, well then show me how it's turning out on the opposite side. And it's like, no, you need to be kept in the dark.
Yeah, right, especially, I think the big difference comes in there is private money. Functions very differently than our obligation for public. We're responsible to the people for this one.
Right, but all these bids are also public money too. Because they're another public agency that has open competitive bidding process, unlike the, the other one that was discussed for that, so it's a private, private contract.
But I think with being offended or upset that we've asked to be educated and have information is just. Kind of a crazy ask, because that's our job to be informed, to make these decisions.
I'm, you're, I can see spinning, I'm waiting.
I I'll wait and uh hold my remarks until I see the documents.
So, so you would like them as well?
Right.
Oh, I've already, I've already passed it, but I would like to do my pass.
So have you seen them already?
No. I think we all have the same suspicions. Uh. It's just a matter of, I guess, where we go once you get the documents. That's the only question that I would. Are you getting the documents for your own personal knowledge going forward or you use, getting, get the documents to use as a weapon? Uh, that's the only part I would uh.
I, I don't.
Warn the board.
I don't see the purpose of a weapon for anything. I think what we're trying to do is is know. Um, where things are at and where they're going so that we can accurately predict where we're gonna be in a couple of years.
And that I can agree, but I do have worries.
Anyways. I don't have anything else for the good of the order today, other than um, looking forward to. Turkey Day on Thursday.
More food.
And Thanksgiving this year, gotta make up for it.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Um, I know just since we have twenty eight people and half of them are in this building. Um, we do have the holiday party on Thursday and not everybody has signed up online for what you're bringing, so. Um, please go to the, your email from Lori or Deborah or whoever the re- most recent one and reminder and sign up and schedule. And if you're in White Salmon, please do the same, so we know how much meat to bring. And so Commissioner Chris here can decide what he's bringing.
Well, I keep getting calls for brisket, but a brisket is a fourteen hour process. And we have interviews the whole day before. So unless I go home at five in the morning and just, I don't know, don't sleep all night. In order to get up in the morning and take the brisket off and then come to work, I don't know how that happens. So, um, yeah, it will be another uh protein that isn't tofu. That's all I can promise. It won't be made out of vegetable, it will be that animal.
Okay, anything else for the good of the order?
Nope.
Um, oh, I gotta write to say this the right way. Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, I would make a motion to adjourn the regular meeting. There I would also note that there is a workshop um slash executive session scheduled for December fourteenth, twenty twenty three. Um, also noting um that we will be meeting um. Uh, December thirteenth, twenty twenty three in the afternoon for executive session. Um, as well as December fifteenth, um, there we will be at the holiday party in White Salmon that I believe begins at eleven. And I hope I hit it all.
Um, you did, except I would add that the executive session tomorrow is in accordance with R C W four two dot three zero dot one one zero print one print G. For the performance discipline and qualification of public, of public employees, we're essentially doing job interviews. So just so the public is well aware of what we're doing tomorrow. Um, all right, we currently have a motion.
Case is class.
To adjourn.
And I will second.
And we have a second. Um, through that, we have motion and with all those stipulations to adjourn until tomorrow. Um, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is a favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Motion passed. Thank you, everyone.